Call the Board of Supervisors and the session for our 8:30 work session with their county county engineer, Anthony Barjet.
Good morning. Okay, I'll start off with the engineers report here. So for Old Farley Road, Rockville Road paving project, the River City paving finished with the first lift of asphalt last week, and they're continuing on the the second lift, the second and final lifts of asphalt this week as well. Old Massey Road paving project, culvert replacement subcontractor Chick for excavating is finishing up work on the box culvert extensions. They'll also be working on crossroad culvert replacements this week, and the road will be closed in those locations. Sundown Road paving project, we're still slated to start on that when school gets out first part of June. State construction is the contractor on that. And then North Banks Road Bridge Replacement, Taylor Construction is planning to start work sometime in either June or July. Also, same thing with Hickory Valley Bridge, Taylor Construction has that one, and they'll they'll start that in June or July. They will stagger those two bridges by a few weeks from each other, so they'll kind of move crews around. Goose Hill Road paving project, prime contractor Progressive Structures is planning to start work in August. And then Thunder Road paving project, prime contractor State State construction is planning to start work July 9th on the culvert replacements. And then we had our pre-construction meeting, the big one last Friday, for the John Deere Bill Grant project. So we discussed that Pierce Tobin, who's the prime contractor, they're probably going to start on the county portion mid-June, I think June 13th it was. And we're so we're gonna have another update meeting on June 9th to discuss, you know, to have another get together and discuss, you know, the opening stages of the project. They are planning to start the Northwest arterial May 31st at this point. And that'll be the start of the the traffic headaches this summer, so.
They're gonna be at the 20 intersection, or are they starting someplace else?
They haven't specifically stated where they're starting. I think they're gonna be doing intersection work first, and so they have the Pennsylvania Avenue and Asbury intersections to to reconstruct. So I believe they're gonna be starting in those one of those areas. They can't do both at the same time. They have to do one or the other.
Kevin, when's school out? Do you know when your daughter's last day is?
They have another week.
It's reach, it's reach.
That's not fair.
It's your son's a senior, isn't he? So he's already.
It's it's the first week of June, I believe.
There's a little overlap, but that's fine. They know. I attended that pre-construction meeting, first time I've ever done that. It was on Zoom, obviously. Right over your shoulder, Anthony.
Yeah.
I my comment would be that I didn't think that the person who was giving the traffic report and the traffic, the detours, I didn't find them to be compelling in understanding that this will basically paralyze a good portion of the city. And we obviously are linked to people's perception of that arterial job. Is there a way for us to, on our Facebook page, or on our website, or maybe the auditor can help us lead, right, with the city on these traffic issues? I just didn't, he just was kind of not real firm about how devastating the closings are gonna be.
Yeah, I, well, I I do think the city engineering staff, they're they're well aware that this is gonna be crippling. So they're planning on using all their social media outlets to get information out. We will use our 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 contact list that we sent out for information. We will certainly get that out there. So I, yeah, I'm pretty sure the information will get flooded out there, but yeah, it's just gonna be here and then here we go.
Kevin, can you look for something from the city? I know your page has been, the auditor's been posting lots of things.
Yeah, we can, we can coordinate anything that Anthony's putting out or the city's putting out and start sharing that on the Dubuque County page, the auditor's page. And I'm sure Sheriff Kennedy would also, he's got quite a, he he's an active social media user. And that'll help get it out there. If we want to go a step further, I can look into the possibility of GIS putting together a quick map layer that will show some of the detours and route changes. And we can link that in our social media. I can't guarantee it's gonna matter, be a matter of, you know, how quickly they could get it done, but we can certainly take a, take a look at doing that.
At one time, we talked about having a Facebook page through, I think, maybe personnel or HR. Is that the case? Did we ever start that?
Dubuque County does have an official Dubuque County Facebook page that is managed by HR.
Okay, so that'd be a good route to put it through, too.
When is that starting again, Anthony?
May 31st is when they're planning to start the city portion. Now, there's some, some kind of minor work that might be going first. They have to do some shoulder paving for the traffic lane shifting, so they may be doing some of that first before they really start ripping into the intersections. I know they really want school to be out, so if school's gonna be going still through the first week of June, you know, they may not be doing quite major construction yet.
It sounded like a lot of the, I mean, they really thought, the city has certainly thought this through, and I think the contractor has. I just didn't think the engineering person was quite understanding, but the work's gonna be done at night.
Yeah.
A great deal of it to try to divert and then be open again for the day, so.
Yeah, it's good. And then for for our portion, Phase 1 is gonna be starting in the Prue Road intersection area. We've got to pave, it's it's gonna be a kind of offset turn lane right there at the track area off of South John Deere Road to kind of help with, you know, moving the traffic. Once they start building the roundabout in that area, that'll help kind of divert the the truck traffic around it. So there'll be some temporary paving that we're gonna start off with first. And then right into Stage 2 will be the the Prue Road Roundabout. And then I think, from what I understood, that's about what they're gonna plan on getting done this year, and then going into next year, they'll start doing Stages 3 through 7, which would be all of reconstructing South John Deere Road, the north roundabout, and then the west John Deere Road paving paving section. So it sounds like they're gonna carry this through most of next year as well. And we do have a completion date of November 15th, 2023, so they can take it all the way up till then if they want to.
And the last day of elementary school is June 2nd.
So at this pre-construction meeting, there were at least two representatives from John Deere there to be fully informed, and I appreciated whoever was the facilitator of, is that from Origin?
Yes.
Yeah, because she was just saying to the group, this is the big group meeting, but there'll be many multiple meetings directly with John Deere. So I I like to hear that, you know, again, that's kind of our portion of the show, so.
We're talking about doing a monthly update. I could see it growing more frequent than that. And certainly with John Deere, we're planning on having them a part of the every, every meeting that we have going forward, so they're always aware of what's what's happening. Yeah, because right off the bat, that we'll be starting off with a detour for them to get around, so that we'll have to work with their facilities, for sure. So it was well-attended, and I think we had 30-plus people there and probably 10 people on Zoom. So it was, it was a well-attended one. It's, for your first pre-con meeting, it was a long one.
And I mean, obviously, I I could, I followed along as best I could, but it's all still fascinating to learn new things and to see, to really understand that it is orchestrated like a symphony. Okay, so you're going next, who's Phase 2, you're over here, do you have that done? That was really, to me, I'd never seen that part of it. And Dave Rennecker was there, police were there, so every, I can't imagine there wasn't a partner to this that wasn't present in that room.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only, I don't think the schools were there, although they were invited.
And I think they just think they're gonna be out of session, and they don't want to have anything to do with it.
Yeah. You know, but they will certainly be a part of our contact list. As we get closer to August, when school's starting back up, so, because they will be impacted. But yeah, it was well-attended. We had contractors there, we had subcontractors there, we had utility companies, we had law enforcement. 911 was there, Mark Murphy. Yeah, it was just well-attended, so it was good, good meeting.
I wish I could have made it. I was a little busy and couldn't make it. I wanted to, but Man was gonna be on it, he told me that, so I thought, well, we'll get the information.
Yeah.
Rick Dickinson was there. I thought that was
Yeah.
really well, you know, that Rick Dickinson from Greater Dubuque.
Yep.
So I think it, you know, it's a federal project, and obviously, the number looks smaller for total cost, only in comparison to all the other things that we're seeing come from, you know, this was a project that was pre-COVID. So just interesting how numbers kind of in different contexts seem different, but it's certainly a worthwhile project, and I don't know how we will continue to do these things at this quality level, Anthony, with you, with you leaving the county, but we will
Well.
do it.
I'm just the face. I have such a great staff. I mean, it's, it's gonna carry on as good or better, in my opinion, you know, so it's, yeah, we're, Dubuque County will be great. I'm pretty pumped that we have the staff we do. I mean, the reason why we do the work we do is because of them, so be fine. Any other questions on the reporting, guys?
The Goose Hill Road one, you said, doesn't start until August?
That's correct.
Probably gonna run into some issues down there with school, too, I suppose, I would assume.
Yeah, yeah.
Project.
There, because there are some big structures there, some box culverts that have to get replaced, that the detour's not great there, you know. And we have to run around on the state roads to get back to to, you know, wherever they need to be. So unfortunately, yeah, that one's gonna be starting at kind of the wrong time. And they'll be carrying that through definitely harvest season, you know, with with the final paving. So it's just gonna be kind of poor timing, but that's, that's what's in the contractor's schedule, so we have to kind of abide by that.
Okay.
Early, who's impacted by, I'm sorry to just not know, Goose Hill Road, I think jumps in my mind about that. Is it the bus traffic going to?
Well, it'd be school, be starting that runs straight west from 136, actually into X County, it's what, five miles roughly?
Yeah, it goes straight into Delaware over to Highway 38.
So are they Dubuque kids? That's a terrible question.
Well, they'd be going to Cascade, probably.
Cascade, I think, yeah. I'm not sure if Western Dubuque goes down there or not, or I'm not sure if Western Dubuque goes down there, if that's just Cascade.
Cascade's in Western Dubuque Community School District, so.
Okay.
Aiming, got the Bobcats and the Cougars.
I think I stepped into something there. Oh, boy. I'm from Texas. I don't know these things.
They're like the Dubuque community schools. They've got a couple of high schools, too.
Yeah, I feel like shots were just fired there or something.
It wasn't about football, so you're fine.
Well, West Delaware's just lately has become an adversary.
Yeah.
Back in the day, they were a little more manageable.
All right, moving on. Let's see, do you want to go to some of your questions, Supervisor McDonough?
Sure.
Okay, I printed out this email, and I guess you can ask questions if you like. I can go through the answers.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I got an email from Supervisor McDonough last night, just to kind of go through some items here. So the truck replacement increase for purchase on contract from May 2021, so the truck that we have, the pickup we have on, on the agenda today for approval. So that's been a very long drawn-out process. So we, we had a bid last year for a pickup from, and it was awarded to Turpin. It was a 2021 model year, regular cab, four-wheel drive. And we were, it was gonna be a maintenance vehicle that we're gonna put a Tommy lift on it. Well, they were never able to come up with this particular pickup, because they're just not, they're not producing them. And, you know, this is the final pickup on this, this contract that we just can't, can't get. So we've been asking them, okay, can you provide us some other options that are out there? There's something sitting on a lot that's similar to it. And they, they've come up with a couple of things, but nothing really that close. So the one that I have here, that they finally threw at us, that they are putting $45,000 on it. It's probably a $65,000 pickup. That, so it would be a savings to us. It's not exactly what we need as far as this goes. But what we were thinking was that we would go ahead and and purchase this, make this our new maintenance superintendent pickup, move his pickup down to the crew foreman pickup, which is currently Pat Ash, and then Pat Ash's pickup, which is a single, single cab, put the timing lift on that, which we've already done, and make that the maintenance vehicle. So it's just kind of shifting, you know, how we're using this particular pickup. We're still, we're ending up finally with a maintenance vehicle that we need. It's just not exactly, you know, what we intended, but so the idea would be to to give this to the the maintenance superintendent and then just move pickups down. We also thought that it might be a while till we see, you know, a pickup like this come at us again, and and definitely at this price, you know, if we were to rebid things right now, we're, we're gonna see price increases compared to, you know, what we, what we saw, so we're just, want to take a, take a risk, I guess, on it.
So I wondered, it's been more than a year, and it was originally a bid process to come up with the vehicle that we've never been able to locate and purchase. It's a $16,000 increase price, different style of vehicle. Do we need to go back to bid? Seems like it was, yes, it's a vehicle, but the terms have changed enough. I don't know if, that's kind of the other thing, is like, do we need to go back to bid, or are we good to just? What do you think?
I feel like if we go back to bid, we're gonna see worse prices. So I don't think we're gonna make up any ground that way. It is a substantial shift from what we originally spected out, I will say that. Kevin, do you have anything?
Yeah, I would, I would echo those statements that supply chain issues haven't gone away, prices are through the roof, and I imagine if we go out for bid, we would be looking at a considerable price increase and and additional, additional delays as well. I I don't see that there's any running afoul of our procurement policy in this case.
I just wanted to thank you for the background. Well, that is an action item for today.
Yeah. Okay. I guess, I don't know how much time you will spend on this, but number two would be.
Why don't you jump to four, which is Luxembourg?
So number four is Luxembourg has filed an ARPA request for money to pave a road in their commercial park. What other funding options might exist? So I'm not too sure what this, what the the functional classification is, or federal classification of the the road itself is. I'm assuming it's a local road. If that's the case, the Small City Fund at the ARPA level will not work, because that's for major collector roads only. The the RCTP fund would work, but, you know, we know the struggles with that right now. There's not a lot of money there. I guess the other funding source I could think of, if it's a commercial, something tied to commercial, it could be, could be RISE eligible. If there's gonna be some new businesses coming in and and new employment, you know, increase of that area, so RISE would be a possibility. As far as ARPA, so much of that is very competitive grant-based, and unless we're showing, a lot of that's not tied to, you know, you're not eligible for local roads, you know, so much of that has to be tied to like a major collector status. So I don't know if you can get much out of ARPA for for this particular situation.
Have you talked to Roger Oberbrockling about this project?
I have not, no.
We heard about it at the mayor's meeting. We talked about it at length there. So I just wanted to thank you for having that brief discussion to see what else there is for him. And then my other two questions related to the proposed changes or possible changes to the ATV ordinance.
Yeah, let me start off with the first one, which is kind of easy to answer. So does Delaware County have times of ATV operation in their, in their ordinance? Yes, they do. It's sunrise to sunset. So not times, just, just to relate to sunrise to sunset. I guess one of your questions is, why do we settle for 5:00 AM to sunset? I'm not sure.
Just remember that was what was negotiated. The gentleman will be here, and maybe when you make your public comments during the public hearing, you can mention that as well. That was my question to the engineer, trying to recall why it was 5:00 AM to sunset. We'll have that discussion. I just, this was my opportunity to ask you, Anthony. And then the other question also relates to the ordinance, which is any changes in roads that are, we can now operate ATVs on, you know, looking at the list of road closures. I don't know which ones are being sought to be opened, but I just wanted you to be aware. I don't know if you'll be present during this portion of our meeting.
Yep, I will.
Okay, but I would welcome that as well. Those were chosen to be closed for a reason. And obviously, changing any of that without you being present, I think would be a step backwards.
Sure, but if you'd like to comment on any of these roads, I'll be here for the meeting, so. And if you want me to comment now, I can, you know, at least like Sundown Road, south of Old Highway. You know, we talked about opening that up, because the city Piasta has, I think, an ordinance now to open it up, right? So that's one of them, so, but if you want to comment on the other ones, I'll be here for that.
Is that how you want to proceed, Jim? Is that how you want to proceed, having him just be part of that discussion? Okay. Thank you.
Sure, I think that's all I got, so unless you have any other questions for me.
All right, man. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Motion to recess until 9:00 AM?
I can add motion.
The motion is second to recess until 9:00. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in recess until 9:00. It's nine o'clock. We'll call the Board of Supervisors in the session for the May 2021
And that's twenty-eight dash thirty-one, the sudden sunset provision, twenty-eight dash thirteen, the hours of operation. And then the roads that are restricted, and that's referred to as both appendix A and addendum A. But those three items are, are on my list right now for, for discussion.
Right.
And I think we have consensus about the sunset clause. Do we not? It's, we all agree that the termination language is going to be deleted and that this ordinance will become permanent.
Right.
Yes, I'm in favor of that.
All right. Note that change is noted.
Yeah. The next would be the hours. I would, uh, be in favor of extending it until ten PM.
I would like to open the public hearing. So my, that's my comment first, but you know, it's, I would like to open the public hearing. Um, just wanted everyone to know that's the three items on my list. We've got two out of three done. But I would like to open the public hearing before we have discussion on the, the rest of the ordinance.
That's fine.
I would agree.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. If anyone in chambers wishing to address the board.
And please state your name and address.
Uh, Dale Lessline seventeen two nine one Asbury Road Drango. Um, I'm also here representing the Dubu county, the Alliance. Um, we're happy that the ordinance will continue, uh, but we'd like to see a few changes made in it. Um, uh, we've gotten feedback from the people of the county for the last several years. And the number one complaint has been the hours of operation. Uh, the five AM has worked fine. Uh, there has been no problem and it was put on at five AM for the hunters is the reason that, uh, the initial thing was on for the hunters on it. The, uh, sunset time that we currently have is by far the thing that people complain about the most. Um, we, uh, uh, Clayton County is eleven o'clock, uh, Jackson County is twenty-four hours a day. The state has proposed a twenty-four hour a day in, in the legislation down there on it. Um, we've taken a survey on our own page. Uh, you could pretty well be broken down into three categories. The people that want it between ten and eleven, eleven and midnight and twenty-four hours a day. Uh, we would support an opening of twenty-four hours a day, but to be all truthful honest with you. Um, if you had something between ten and eleven o'clock for a, uh, time period there, you could probably satisfy the majority of the people if you felt the need to have a restriction. Uh, the other thing is, is our roads that are banned. Um, John Deere Road is the number one thing. I think, uh, half of Dubu County is trapped anyhow by John Deere Road. Uh, I understand that during a certain period of time, John Deere Road is heavily traveled, but if you go out there on evenings and weekends, it's pretty much empty. And, uh, I would like to see the board come up with some way that we could help eliminate these people back there. Uh, be able to get them to come out. Um, JFK Road is another road that we get a lot of complaints on that's being, uh, closed. Um, I'm not sure what the traffic count is on that or if it would be an issue on it or not. Uh, two other roads that clearly need to be opened up is Dyersville East Road from the city limits of Dyersville out to the Field of Dreams. Uh, the, I've spoke with the people at the Field of Dreams. Uh, they definitely want that be uplifted. Uh, there is really no reason here that the city of Dyersville now allows ATVs and side-by-sides in there. So we'd like to see that be uplifted. And also, uh, we have recently started discussions, uh, with Asbury. There is a short section of road on Hales Mills Road between there and Derby Grange. Um, the Asbury Police Chief supports us and is, is, is helping us move forward with that. So, uh, we're hoping to have something done with that, uh, short section of road to have that ban lifted as well. But those are really the, the major roads on it. I know, uh, sundown road was mentioned, sundown road south of Old Highway Road. That has already been opened. That was amended. Uh, sundown road south of Piasta. Uh, I can understand if you want to keep that one, uh, closed at this time, but I would also like the board to look at the traffic counts to see if the southwest arterial has decreased the traffic count on that road at all. But, uh, the, this is, this ordinance has been a huge success, people. Uh, you know, it has been good for our rural small towns. Uh, just the other night, uh, we took off about five o'clock in our side-by-side and we drove in front of restaurants. And we counted eighty-nine side-by-sides between five and seven thirty. And these were families and friends and just out enjoying the beautiful Dubu County weather and patronizing our small rural towns. And this has been good for the people and the people at Dubu County have done an absolutely incredible job. Anyhow, when we started this out, uh, you know, they told us anyhow, all these bad things that were going to happen and and it has been nothing. Everything that we told the, the board has happened. And we are very proud of the, how the people at Dubu County have responded. They have done a fabulous job and and like I said, we, we're happy that this ordinance is going to continue, but it needs to be made with a few changes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Me. Marie Mullenbein. Hello.
Ron Schweitzer from Dubu County, one three four nine zero, Masala Court. I'm kind of representing a neat club. Uh, I'd make a correction on Dale's time-wise for counties, uh, Jackson County is ten o'clock. I think it's counties twenty-four hours. Hour-wise on that. Uh, I've had, we've had good successes, you know, the last three years at the Roadhouse, no major incidents as everybody respects. I think we do a lot of good job on self-policing. We see people out there, don't have a flag or something, you'd stop them or turn your headlights on. Stuff like that, which, you know, some minor things, but, yes, we've helped out different things and we patronized the restaurants like this last week. We had a riot, our club did, and we ate lunch up at Bright Box up there and and, you know, Mike really appreciate comes by. Thank you, thank you and everything. So he knows that we're, we're trying to do good for the community. Uh, I've heard some people concerned about opening up some roads too, you know? I guess we'd like to try to see for the hours, maybe twenty-four seven like Jones County does. I don't think they've had any incidents about that. And like Dale said too, you know, the five o'clock in the morning, that was for the hunters. And the way it is now, you know, you gotta be off the road by sunset while our hunting season doesn't end until half hour after sunset. So if you're out deer hunting, you can't, you gotta leave before your, your hunting time's done that day. And if you got a bunch of deer out front of you, well, you don't leave your family because now they know. On that. And then also, you know, we got summertime coming, you're like, you know, sometimes it doesn't start getting dark till nine, nine thirty at night. Well, if we go up to like ten o'clock, you know, sometimes that don't give enough people to get home too if they're somewhere, but that, we'd like to see a little longer and time-wise. Uh, we've heard too, some people have concern about opening up some of the roads. One of them that I've heard was, um, uh, Military Road from they like to see it opened up from like Oakland Farms to Key West. You get in the Key West there, then they could patronize, uh, whatever that business restaurant that, the Key West.
Marquis.
Okay, yeah, because I know they keep changing, but you know, right now that they can't get there to ride their machines into that point. And I know some people I've heard say John Deere Road, you know, those people in those subdivisions, we call it the North Subs. You know, they're out, they're landlocked in there and even back down by UJ, you know, off of, down in there. But, um, that's the two most roads I've heard that people would like to see opened up. You know, we can understand too, you know, sundown, you know, it's pretty heavy, heavily traffic for O two, but like they also maybe do a recount on that. I think that's about all I could think of unless you have some questions or.
I don't know, man. Thank you, Ron. Jay or Ann?
We do have, uh, hand raised on Zoom as well.
Okay. We're gonna do everybody here first or? Anybody else want to address the board on anything different or?
I do.
My name's Dave George. I live at fifteen four twenty-five Woodville Court, Piast, Iowa. I'm new to the UTVs and, uh, side-by-sides. I just purchased one this February. My wife, we wanted to get one for taking our kids and our grandkids out and seeing the sights, going to different restaurants and stuff like that. We're very limited on the time because you really have to plan what you're doing because of the fact you, how far out you go. And what time you've got to get back to get home. So I would believe twenty-four hours would be a very helpful timeframe in which to do this. Because if we're driving at any time during the dark, I mean, we, we've got to be street legal and everything with all of our lights and everything and flags and and I, everybody I've seen and myself been very respectful on the roads as far as, uh, operations and being careful and things like that. So I would like to see that amongst some of the other roads opened up also. I, we're, we are right where, um, the Swiss Valley Interchange is put in on Swiss Valley Road. We just love, leave, love a little bit west of that. Uh, we can go west on North Cascade Road. But as I understand it, going east in towards Dubu is banned, is one of the banned roads that we can't travel on. So, and then getting into the other small towns, you know, like was said here, I think is very important. Like Burkey's business into Key West and stuff be very important. I know that a lot of the, the businesses that, uh, people on the side-by-sides and ATVs frequent are very appreciative of the business that they get. I know we go to the Blackbird and going out to the wineries and it's very nice. So just my part. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wishing to address the board?
Ron Loyk's one oh four First Avenue East in Worthington. Um, I guess I'd like to see the hours extended to twenty-four hours just for the simple fact you wouldn't have to worry about time. It's, you know how things go. You plan on being home and you stay a little longer than you should visiting or, you know, we go to kids and grandkids' ball games and sometimes they run later than expected. And, uh, it'd just be nice. As far as roads go out in Worthington, your road closures don't affect me too much. Uh, I'm also in, uh, Rosa Trail Club in Delaware County. Yeah, their hours are sunrise, sunset. Um, we're one of the first counties to have an ordinance and we're pretty much willing to settle for what we could get because we had nothing else to compare it to. Um, but we've been talking as a club about getting hours extended too, but we're kind of waiting to see what the state did. We expected to have something done by now, but it hasn't. So that's all I have.
Right. Thank you, Ron. Anyone else in chambers? Elton Chambers, anyone online?
Yes, go ahead, Marie.
Hi, uh, my name's Marie Mullenbein. I live at three six zero six Echo Hills Drive. Our street is right off of Saint Catherine's Road.
Marie, can you hold off a second here? We have a volume issue.
You're coming in very quiet. Uh, try that. That's gonna be really loud.
Hello?
Okay, now go ahead, Marie.
Okay. Uh, my name's Marie Mullenbein. I live at three six zero six Echo Hills Drive. We had a riot, our club did, and we ate lunch up at Bright Box up there and and, you know, Mike really appreciate comes by, thank you, thank you, and everything. So he knows that we're we're trying to do good for the community. I've heard some people concerned about opening up some roads too, you know. I guess we'd like to try to see for the hours, maybe twenty four seven like Jones County does. I don't think they've had any incidents about that. And like Dale said too, you know, the five o'clock in the morning, that was for the hunters. And the way it is now, you know, you gotta be off the road by sunset while our hunting season doesn't end until half hour after sunset. So if you're out deer hunting, you can't, you gotta leave before your your hunting time's done that day. And if you got a bunch of deer out front of you, well, you don't leave your family because now they know. On that, and then also, you know, we got summertime coming, you're like, you know, sometimes it doesn't start getting dark till nine, nine thirty at night. Well, if we go up to like ten o'clock, you know, sometimes that don't give enough people to get home too if they're somewhere. But that we'd like to see a little longer and timewise. We've heard too, some people have concern about opening up some of the roads. One of them that I've heard was Military Road from they'd like to see it opened up from like Oakland Farms to Key West. You get into Key West there, then they could patronize whatever that business restaurant that the Key West.
Marquis.
Okay, yeah, because I know they keep changing, but you know, right now that they can't get there to ride their machines into that point. I know some people I've heard say John Deere Road, you know, those people in those subdivisions, we call it the North Subs. You know, they're out there landlocked in there and even back down by UJ, you know, off of down in there. But that's the two most roads I've heard that people would like to see opened up. You know, we can understand too, you know, sundown, you know, it's pretty heavily traffic for O two, but like they also maybe do a recount on that. I think that's about all I could think of unless you have some questions or.
I don't have anything. Thank you, Ron. Jay or Ann?
We do have a hand raised on Zoom as well.
Okay. We're gonna do everybody here first or? Anybody else want to address the board on anything different or?
I do.
Nice, Dave George, I live at fifteen four twenty five Woodville Court, Piast, Iowa. I'm new to the UTVs and side by sides. I just purchased one this February, my wife. We wanted to get one for taking our kids and our grandkids out and seeing sights, going to different restaurants and stuff like that. We're very limited on the time because you really have to plan what you're doing because of the fact you how far out you go and what time you've got to get back to get home. So I would believe twenty four hours would be a very helpful timeframe in which to do this, because if we're driving at any time during the dark, I mean, we we've got to be street legal and everything with all of our lights and everything and flags and and I've everybody I've seen and myself been very respectful on the roads as far as operations and being careful and things like that. So I would like to see that amongst some of the other roads opened up also. I we're we are right where the Swiss Valley Interchange is put in on Swiss Valley Road. We just love leave love a little bit west of that. We can go west on North Cascade Road. But as I understand it, going east in towards Dubuque is banned, is one of the banned roads that we can't travel on. So and then getting into the other small towns, you know, like was said here, I think is very important. Like Burkey's Business into Key West and stuff be very important. I know that a lot of the the businesses that the people on the side by sides and ATVs frequent are very appreciative of the business that they get. I know we go to the Blackbird and going out to the wineries and it's very nice. So just my part. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wishing to address the board?
Ron Loyk's, one oh four First Avenue East in Worthington. I guess I'd like to see the hours extended to twenty four hours, just for the simple fact, you wouldn't have to worry about time. It's, you know how things go, you plan on being home and you stay a little longer than you should visiting or, you know, we go to kids and grandkids ball games and sometimes they run later than expected. And it'd just be nice as far as roads go out in Worthington. Your road closures don't affect me too much. I'm also in the Roadster Trail Club in Delaware County. Yeah, their hours are sunrise, sunset. We're one of the first counties to have an ordinance and we're pretty much willing to settle for what we could get because we had nothing else to compare it to. But we've been talking as a club about getting hours extended too, but we're kind of waiting to see what the state did. We expected to have something done by now, but it hasn't. So that's all I have.
Right. Thank you, Ron. Anyone else in chambers? Elton Chambers, anyone online?
Yes, go ahead, Marie.
Hi, my name's Marie Mullenbein. I live at three six zero six Echo Hills Drive. Our street is right off of St. Catherine's Road.
Marie, can you hold off a second here? We have a volume issue.
You're coming in very quiet. Try that. That's gonna be really loud.
Hello?
Okay, now go ahead, Marie.
Okay. My name's Marie Mullenbein. I live at three six zero six Echo Hills Drive. And I would not like to see the hours extended. Our street is right off of St. Catherine's Road. And we've already been hearing the ATVs come in, like when there's a whole train of them. And it's very loud. These machines are louder than cars. And our St. Catherine's Road is curvy. It's already dangerous just with cars out there. So I don't I don't see any reason for these machines. They're not made for the road. So I think it's dangerous. I think it's loud. And it's if the hours are extended, the people who are driving them then are, you know, getting their kicks at the expense of everyone else's peace and quiet. That's all.
Thank you, Marie. Do we have anyone else online that would like to comment?
Nobody else is indicating they would like to speak.
Okay. Do we wish to close the public hearing or?
We keep it open as we have dialogue and then kind of when you're ready to move off the subject, we close it. But that's my comments.
That's fine. As I had stated, I'd be in favor of extending it until ten o'clock. I think we need to take baby steps forward. We've been, it's been very good. I just have an issue with opening it up to twenty four hours yet. I'd like to stay at the ten o'clock. Think that gives people ample time to get home from after supper or whatever. A bunch of roads we can deal with, but.
Thinking through it, you know, as I look at the the roads we're looking to open in in our time of operation, the more we continue to have restrictions and are just, you know, variances from open access and twenty four seven access, like more pressure it puts on law enforcement and or certainly knowledge related to all the ATV, UTV riders. Not sure how much we gain by restricting it from ten PM versus twenty four seven. You we've already expressed the faith in the riders and with some clauses, you've got to be eighteen, you've got to have various equipment, those types of things. So we've already expressed the trust, just like you have the trust with anyone who owns a driver's license today to to be on the public right of way. So I just, I don't know how much we gain by just putting it at ten PM, other than it's going to put pressure on law enforcement. And then we could talk about the road list as well, but that's my comments. My first, my, you know, if I felt there was significant advantage, I would probably look to to curtail it to ten, but I'm not sure what we're gaining.
I think it's a safety aspect. The other portion, you brought law enforcement. Years past, obviously, everyone that has an ATV or UTV knows that they were subject to getting stolen quite frequently. There were several of them got stolen. Generally, when I was in law enforcement, if you saw a UTV or ATV out at two o'clock in the morning, you could bet they were up to something other than outriding. And generally, they were, they're using them to break into taverns or use them. That's that was their mode of transportation because they could get off into the fields.
That's why we had some house burglaries out in Lake Eleanor Road and Kemp Road subdivision where we lived. There were some young riders that that was how they were breaking into homes and then getting lost generally around, so.
Not saying that any of the groups have any illegal intent by any means. It has been very good. We haven't had any issues. The biggest complaint that I've had is guys not getting off, moving over for traffic behind them. Just a courtesy. I mean, it's not in the ordinance, but somebody comes up behind you, you know, move over that they can get by and we can all get along if you have somebody complaining well. How that goes. But that's my feeling. I think ten o'clock, I mean, I would be willing to go eleven o'clock. I don't, I didn't like the sunset because your definition of sunset, my definition of sunset aren't the same. Ten o'clock is ten o'clock or eleven o'clock is eleven o'clock, whatever. But that would be my input on the hours thing is to ten o'clock or, I mean, I would. I could move towards eleven, but I think ten is definitely late enough.
From the other the other side, I mean, certainly getting ATV, UTVs off the road at eleven, I'm sure, unfortunately, with your experience, you've seen more traffic accidents past eleven. And so ATV, UTVs are the smaller. So that that might actually help safety related to ATV, UTV ridership just from, you know, if I was a bike rider, I would not be riding a bike even if I had, you know, lights on it at dark, just because, you know, I weigh what I weigh and my bike weighs forty pounds. So I think there's some some advantages there. You know, I think the group has expressed they would be open and have been very willing to to understand what the community needs are and what elected officials positions are. So, you know, I would, I would support eleven if that's where the board was at. But I I'm not sure exactly how much we gain with that, but that might be a good starting point. And we've always said that this ordinance can be adopted as needed. And this is a goodwillness of the supervisors to to make changes.
And I'm shouldn't say assume, but guessing that probably next year the state will pass the law governing it, which would be better. We were hoping it was going to happen this year, but obviously that's not the case. So thankfully, we can live with this for another year and hopefully the state will take it over and it'll be uniform across the entire state at that point, which. Thoughts?
I we want to have the engineer come back to the podium, I think, for the road issues of what roads are being recommended to be opened. And you were in all those committee meetings and these are the roads that you these we followed your recommendations, I recall each of these was based on consensus from you, Anthony, that these are the roads to be targeted.
I think this these roads, you know, by banning them initially, that gave us a good cautious approach to this ordinance to kind of taking those baby steps into the into the ATV, UTVs in the in the county. So all these were based on, you know, major collector highways, thousand vehicles per day or greater. Some of them are terrain issues as well, like Oakland Farms Road. You know, that said, I I really haven't had any problems, you know, as far as deterioration, any any gravel roads or or, you know, any of the class B dirt roads, anything on the highways. So, you know, when this was the first adopt in Delaware County, that was one of my biggest concerns is, okay, what are they going to do on the roads? Are they going to start tearing them up or, you know, start doing donuts and tearing things up? You know, between Delaware and Dubuque County, I've had not had any issues. So from that perspective, these clubs have done a great job managing, you know, their 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 other groups, being real respectful. So, you know, personally, I I would be open to discussion on some of these roads. I think sundown south of Highway twenty is still a concern because it's the traffic count, I don't think has decreased at all from Southwest arterial. In fact, if anything, I think might have increased a little bit. Still need to see the the final traffic counts that they did last year, so I need to see where that's going. Oakland Farms Road is another concern that I have just because of the terrain. With these ATVs, I think the max is what thirty five miles per hour on them? That just from a safety perspective, I would have concerns running through those hills. You know, one of these days we will reconstruct Oakland Farms Road and have a flatter grade. And I think that'll that'll make a big difference for this ordinance. You know, we do have Old Highway open. That is a, that is one of the roads that we decided that we're going to keep that open. That's a major collector highway that's easily over a thousand vehicles per day and that that has operated just fine. You know, we do have some, you know, some curvature through it, some hills, you know, but it, I think that's been a good test, having that open. So I I think just like sundown road south of sundown road, South Highway twenty and Oakland Farms are the two that are still my concern. Beyond that, I think it's it's kind of open for discussion. The discussion in the roads, I jumped in. Your your list is very close to mine, so one, this may be make comment from Dale and Ron. You know, ten out of the sixteen roads you had mentioned. And so as I kind of went through my my list, the only one that I would want to hold was number one, which is sundown road. So we're we're very close. And so I would, I would propose that we we open all those roads with the exception of sundown road, south, excuse me, south of US twenty, so allow the Piasta, the Piasta transition. Oakland Farms, yes, it's it's hilly, but so is Roller Coaster Road. And so is, you know, and many, many, many roads in Dubuque County, but it sounds like we're we're close as far as the other ones. I don't see a reason to ban the other roads at this point, based upon my experience when I've seen.
And we're still in public comment, correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Anthony, do we have updated traffic counts on Key West Drive?
So the latest data I have is from two thousand seventeen. We're told to have the twenty one counts and they haven't released that yet. So I don't have it in front of me. I could get the seventeen counts for for the group here, you know, later today if I can email those out.
I I ask, I live on Military Road and we haven't had too many problems, if at all. We do have, you know, thirty five miles an hour is obviously subject to interpretation. Oakland Farms Road, which I drove twice yesterday, is, I don't know the last time people have been on it, but there are a number of patches and there is a number of yeah, short up areas and the bridge, in fact, is now one lane road with large vehicles being told to drive down the middle of the bridge. That and some of the hills where you can't see anybody coming over and people loving to ride the center line. And the portion of military that's closed, I understand because obviously it was closed in Key West Drive. Key West Drive is pretty heavily traveled. And it's two lanes in each direction with the turn lane in the center and a bike path or a walking path on each side. So I would, I would ask that if the board is considering adding that section of military in Key West Drive, that we do a little bit more study to see how many cars are going through there, because that's a, that's an area that is seeing consistent traffic.
I would not be in favor of opening Oakland Farms Road. All the other ones I had at all list. One was JFK from, my thought was from Collision Drive to Derby Grange. Because there's people in along JFK that can't get out.
One of the reasons why I think we put JFK on there, at least from my interpretation, is that it's some of it's City Dubuque. You know, some of it's Dubuque County and so.
I was just looking at Derby Grange to Collision Drive, just that section of it encompassed the subdivisions in the county. Like, what is the Daisy Trail, Cherrywood, Collision Drive, there's people live up on top of that.
Also, I don't have the, I don't have the ability to get the map up here, but I believe for number fourteen, Dyersville East Road, I believe there's an annexation that occurred that may or may not affect a portion of that road section.
As far as the road portion, they didn't, I don't think Dyersville annexed any more of that.
But that has come as as that has come as at the request of the City of Dyersville's input to us.
Yeah.
So before we remove that, I think we would want to have conversation with them.
Agreed. And that was when this ordinance went into effect multiple years ago. And at that time, I don't think Dyersville was even allowing ATV, UTV. So a lot has changed. I agree, that was their request previously, but a lot has changed. Now, I think this is a public hearing. They're they're very aware, they're very tuned in. We actually have some people from Dyersville Hill, citizens and other economic development. But, you know, now's their chance to weigh in on this and they did previously, so they're familiar with the process. I I would caution the board not to necessarily wait for for every city to show up here. We have twenty one of them and they're they're well aware of the process and familiar with providing input to us.
Right. And that's why sundown road was closed south of Old Highway is because Piasta didn't allow it.
Yep, good point.
And it's the same thing now. Dyersville allows it, so you might as well open up the road that they can get to Dyersville.
You know, and so is the, you know, so the discussion related to Oakland Farms and a few others, you know, just adding government caution to users? Or is it, is it, you know, is that where the caution comes from? Is that we're trying to protect the ATV user groups on in anyone using it? Because obviously everyone's using it today with the exception of ATV, UTV users. So who are we, who are we protecting by keeping on that list?
I think we're protecting everybody. ATV driver that could get hit by these kids that go flying over the top of these hills. And you going down the road and come over top of the hill and accidentally hit a UTV driver. Well, you have to live with what you did. They might not live. It's just the terrain of that road, I don't think, is safe. Dale?
Are bicycles and mopeds banned on that road?
Not that I'm aware of.
And a side by side in an ATV would be bigger than a bicycle or a moped. And that would clearly be able to go more with the flow of traffic than a bicycle would be. So I just, you know, I want you to consider all aspects of it.
A bicycle is also easier to get past when you're going over the top of the hill. I'm just looking at the safety aspect of it.
Bicycle's controlled by state code. We've had this discussion four years ago. The bicycle is not something that's, you know, if you can get the bicycle thing changed when we do this down at the State House, that would be the folks to address where bikes get to be and don't get to be.
I would, I would agree with that, but I think it opens the door to the, okay, that's kind of the the lay of the land, that's the precedence. So for us to keep carving up safety, little safety components that, you know, granted that there's a lot of risk. There's a lot of risk in riding a horse. There's a lot of risk in riding a bike. There's a lot of risk operating on, you know, a vehicle, a truck. And certainly there's risk with ATV, UTV. And I don't know if we're going to be able to manage that by picking and choosing a few roads. I don't know where we we come, how that gives us any significant advantage. So I understand what you're saying. I just don't think in practice it gains you a lot of advantage. And if you were starting from total risk adverse position, you you would have had probably Supervisor McDonough's position a few years ago, which was, you know, definitely on that safety vantage point and that, you know, risk tolerance that government can can oppose. With with the cards were dealt in the precedents and the, you know, the public demand for access to right of way. I don't know if it's our job just to ban roads in 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 an attempt to try to keep everyone safe. I just don't know if that will work. And otherwise you'd probably ban a lot of them, right? I mean, there'd be a bunch of them like, hey, let's just, let's just, you know, quit all these roads because they're got turns on them and hills on them and they're gravel and it's just, it's just a difficult position. I mean, some some are obvious or more obvious than others. But I but I think it's fewer than than more. That's where I'm at.
The state code does require that we look at the roads, which is why we did. It says that's that's the path that counties who wish to do this must proceed with, evaluating which roads, if any, should not have ATV traffic. We did that. It was long. It was unpleasant. We came up with this document that we've heard has worked well. People have been inconvenienced and I understand that. The ordinance will go on in a form that is inconvenient to people unless we make other changes. The difficulty that I exist is that we are under a time crunch of our making. We can still change this ordinance and allow it to go forward unchanged with no interruption, no chaos, no confusion. The current continues on. And then quickly this summer, address the things that need to be addressed. What roads, what's Dyersville's position? Those are things that can still be addressed. And we will meet everyone's timeline. So that that's where I have been. That is where I was for the last several weeks. And we know the state's going to act, so taking action that the state is going to further. Taking action that the state is going to further change adds more confusion. So, um, and, you know, that's my, that would be my position, that we should continue on with what we have. Do this quickly, the continuing on, the making it permanent, and then take time to study this once again. To make sure that our changes are correct.
As far as Oakland Farm Road, that's kind of out in my neck of the woods where where I live. And I just was wondering, I understand where you're coming from Harley, but, um. I have a Harley Davidson motorcycle I ride, okay? And it's not, there's no flag that's six foot above the ground in my Harley. And I ride that road on my Harley. And my ATV or UTV is, is as tall as my F-150. I've got a Can-Am six-seater and I got the flag a footer better above the cab of that. So somebody's going to see me more on my UTV. Than they are any other licensed vehicle on the road. As far as seeing me, protecting me. And I think most of the people running the ETVs, especially you got the age limit, you don't have the young kids that are really. Wild out there, but, uh, they're pretty responsible people. Pull off to the side, hug the side of the road, at least I do when I approach a hill for oncoming vehicles over there. I pretty much see Jay's point in there. How is that road any different than any other road that has hills in it? All over Dubuque County. So that's, that's the only thing I'd like to make comment about. And one question, if the state passes the law, does this ordinance basically? As far as what roads are determined, go away then?
On what they write and what they pass. That's the thing. We don't know what their language is.
But if they say all roads, including highways, other than certain, yeah, then then that would, that would open up all the roads automatically. Okay, thank you.
But like I said, with Oakland Farms, my biggest issue is safety. If, you know, people pass, trying to pass an ATV. You know, everybody's in a hurry. When you're getting close to the crest of the hill and they're trying to pass you. Also, we have head-on collision and we got a ATV right in the middle of it too, you know. That's just my concern is the safety on that road because I worked a lot of accidents on that road. And it wasn't because of driving too slow. That's my biggest concern with that road.
Ron McCarthy, two oh seven Old Forest Drive, Upworth. The, I think one of the biggest concerns in, in my opinion is. People having a clear what they can do and what can't they do. It's clear the state has a thirty-five maximum speed limit. No question on that. It's unclear. When sunset is, it's unclear to most which roads they can ride on and which they can't. I get a lot of calls on, hey, can we ride on this particular road or that particular road? And I don't have them. In my head by, by heart. So it would sure be nice if all of the roads were open. And in my opinion only, Oakland Farms Road. It would be nice if it would be open to let people get from here to there, but I don't know that it would be a necess, it would be a major. Travel route. Most people, I think, would avoid it. Because of the terrain and and the speed, I myself would avoid it. I'd have to have a special reason to be, to be going on that. And I don't know that I would, but I'm not, I can't say that for sure. But, um, you know, the, the sundown road. I think that's a very safe road. It's extremely high traffic, but it's a nice, straight, wide road. But anyway, that's my opinion on having it clear and concise. People, if they know what they can and cannot do, I think they're a lot more apt to follow.
Thank you, Ron.
I think on Oakland Farms, I think it isn't speeding like forty miles an hour.
On what?
On Oakland Farms, forty, so we're doing thirty-five. You know, so it's only like five mile an hour difference. So it's not like you're on a fifty mile an hour zone doing thirty-five on there. So I would. And maybe some people would like to see the, the hills and the, you know, the train. You know, we have people on our clubs that we live out like Des Moines and. Ames out that way. We go down like Spex Ferry, if in these landing and all those hills, they just love that. They just love that scenery, you know, seeing some of that stuff that they don't see out there. Because it's so flat and they, they really enjoy that. And once they have some of our club rides that do stuff like that. You know, but that's my points anyway, you know, it's only like five mile an hour difference and. It's like anything else, you know, you got other vehicles, bicycles or even mopeds out there that can ride that road. And and we're bigger, we got flags and, you know, we're pretty visible. I think, you know, we got our, we got our taillights and headlights on that. You know, that we, you guys require us to have on. And so I think we're pretty visible on pretty much most of these roads to ride on, on that.
Thank you.
I guess we'd have two ways to move forward. Do it hands way. Now we definitely hit the timeline without a problem. We can make the changes to the ordinance after. By first, I guess. Or try to make changes now and get it in. By the end of June.
I would favor the latter. I think the, you know, we, we, we have groups here for changes. We set up a mechanism to sunset this, to ask for changes. We're in a public hearing. You know, I think if the board is inclined to make changes in the near term, now is the time to do it. You know, we, we set up these restrictions intentionally as. Federations compromise, um, in the ATV, UTV groups were like, we, we want access, that's clear. Uh, that's been granted with some restrictions. And my vantage point is now to come back and see, you know, why are they in place and do they, do they have value? And I certainly understand if you live on these roads, you know, that, yeah, and if you're not an ATV, UTV enthusiast. You'd prefer them not to be there. Uh, I also would prefer not to hear trains all the time and semis. And don't take any offense, Harleys loud or people with bad mufflers, because I don't like noise either. Uh, but, but that's not, you know, there, there's, there's rules and regulations to that and public access is one of the. You know, stronger components of, of what we do here in government. So I, so I would propose that we, we, we remove all the restrictions on the road with the exception of Sundown Road. That's where I'm at. And then I'd also propose we, we do the eleven, five AM to eleven PM. Seems like there's consensus there. Those are the changes I would be looking to make.
I could go at the eleven. I don't have an issue with that. Uh, Sundown Road, definitely. Oakland Farms Road, I have an issue with that one. I just, I do have concerns over that. But everything else, I would have no issue with opening up and just move this forward that way.
I think I've said what I intend to say.
You don't want to change anything right now? Or would you be? Agreeable to ten or eleven o'clock? It's a ten, Jay said eleven. I said I'd be flexible on that.
So certainly people have reached out to me to say that. The time that currently exists is what is agreed upon and was agreed upon by everybody. And it made the deal happen. Three years ago, we did this in twenty nineteen. So what's changed since then? We've determined that some folks are inconvenienced by this. It's overwhelmingly successful. Some people are inconvenienced, so I understand that. There are other people who feel they will be inconvenienced and impacted by the vehicles being on the roads. Past sundown. That's also valid. So it's a weighing of. Interest that people have to peace and enjoyment. Whether it's peace and quiet or enjoyment. So that's what we're weighing. And I don't think that in our first public hearing on this, it's time to make the final decisions. This is the initial public hearing. Other people have corresponded with me. I can't be here today. We have not had anything yet from the sheriff. If there's anything he wishes to state about this. So, I mean, that's where I am. I would like to continue the ordinance. State is going to take action. Continuing what we have allows us to have time for greater clarity. The rush on this is because the ordinance is set to expire. We can remove that and then go through the process with diligence to get it right. So that's where I am. And that's, I've restated that now. This is my second or third time. So. My feeling.
The timeline kind of did catch up to us, but we, everybody was under the. Guys that the state was going to pass something and it failed. Moved through the legislature.
Supervisor McPatt, it sounds like, sounds like we're close to agreement. And so I won't, you know, there's no reason to continue a debate related to Oakland Farms. So I, you know, I don't think there's any great fairs that happen on Oakland Farms and. While the view might be nice, I, I think we have a lot more other views. So. If Oakland Farms is on your list to, to block for safety reasons, I, I think that's acceptable. I would be willing to support that. Uh, along with south of, of US twenty on Sundown Road. And then the eleven PM timeframe. So I think we have agreements to that. This Supervisor McDonough, I just, you know, I, you know, we got flashbacks when we first did this. And you're still using words like rush and chaos and confusion. I don't think those are fair. I, this wasn't clearly rushed. We've known about this for years. There is no chaos, there is no confusion. And, and I think the public, well, some do not like it. I received those same emails. And I don't ride an ATV, UTV. I'm trying to think if I ever rode an ATV, TV in Dubuque County on a road. I don't think I have. Not an activist. But I, I do understand the role of, of government and the understanding of the road of public access. And from my vantage point, I think it's, it's, uh, they have, they have rights and responsibilities, just like all the other people that are on the road. So I, I, if you are willing to, to move forward with, I don't know if it's a motion or if we're, we're looking for just general consensus, I think we have it. With two thirds of the board.
You just need consensus to.
We still have time issues that we still have to walk through because.
I was just asking.
Delaying will not help those.
And no, and I would like to just clarify, what I'm trying to avoid is the chaos and confusion. That's what I'm trying to do, which is what the sheriff has told me. That enforceability is best when it's predictable. That's what's made this successful. It's written, it's clear, it's easy to follow. So I'm not suggesting that there's chaos right now. They have self-policed quite well. And I want to have that be continued so that it can be that way. I, I think that. The way you build transparency in government is slow, steady. You make sure that when you're making a change to an ordinance, it's going to affect people's peace and quiet and enjoyment in their home. We probably should talk about that a time or two. So that they feel that their government is letting them know that change is afoot. And so that's where I, I don't have a motive for this. Anyone can count votes. But I do think that some time built into this allows people to feel that they've been heard. This notice we posted today says we're going to talk generally about changes and generally ask people for input. It doesn't state that we're talking about changing times and roads that you can drive on. And I, I asked that. I didn't, I wasn't in charge of the notice. We said that the sunset provision. In terms of the termination of the ordinance was going to be discussed today. We have consensus on that. That could move forward. These other issues, I think. In fairness to the whole county, can wait a bit longer.
I don't, I don't want to go into twelve rounds like we did to get this passed. But, you know, you, you talk about transparency a lot and you talk about we can't discuss this at night meetings. And then you say, you know, it's too early in the morning to discuss things. Uh, we've talked about this multiple times. Show the notes, you could watch the video. Just the last meeting setting this up, there was discussion about roads and times. It was clear, at least for anyone listening and engaging, not all the public does. Many, some of my friends still think I work now I'm on the city council, so I get it. Not everybody wants to study government every day. But for those that are interested, I think we've been very clear and very transparent. And this has been a very steady process. I just don't see it any other way. I mean, I mean, and we can go back to the record. These aren't surprises.
Now, the, the noise thing, what you're saying, I understand that, but. We don't restrict motorcycles going up and down the road. I live on a hill. Semis don't stop at ten o'clock. It's all night long, Jake breaks and.
Right.
Everything else. So, eh, the noise issue is, well. Unless we're going to restrict, nothing against you, Steve, but Harley-Davidson with loud exhaust and. Uh, crotch rockets, uh, z- zinging up and down the highway. I mean. Yeah, the ATVs, UTVs are a little noisier. I'm not disputing that. But if you live on the road, you have noise, whether it's a farm tractor, whether it's whatever, there's, there's going to be noise. Farmers are running twenty-four, seven now getting the crops in. I think we could move this forward if we say eleven o'clock and. All the roads except for Oakland Farms and Sundown, we can have that in to the. Up for the next meeting.
We do have one, uh, person on Zoom who would like to speak since we're still in public.
We're still in public hearing, go ahead.
Go ahead, Marie.
Thank you. Um, the noise thing is an issue because, uh, the, these groups like to get together. And come fifty at a time down the road. And they just keep coming and coming and coming and it's very loud and it didn't used to be. Now it's louder. So a farmer, I get, he's got to do his crops. But that's not as consistent as these groups that now are organizing to have weekly. Stints, we, weekly get like little rides they take. And they organize it and they say, hey, let's go out on that road every week and meet down at the bar. And then come back on St. Catherine's. So it is an issue. The noise is an issue. They're very loud. I have one and I use it in my yard. Uh, to, to do yard work, but it's, it's very loud and I'm conscious of it. So that I don't start it early or run it late. And I don't run it on weekends because my neighbors are all home and I don't want to disturb them. It's rude. So the noise, I, I think that, uh, you, you can't just flap off and say, no, the noise isn't an issue because it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Yeah, the other thing I would point out to my colleagues is, you know, we, we're doing this because the code requires us to do this. Right? So we don't get to say how loud somebody's Harley is or what vehicle you're driving. That isn't, there's a statute that says how county supervisors can open roads. And these are the discussions we have to have. So they're not evil, they're not motivated, they're the discussions that are intended to occur. So if the board wishes to move forward based upon those discussions, that's fine. But I, I just do take offense that I'm perceived to have some motivation. I do not. And I wish the state very much would take this and make it uniform so we would all know what it is that we're facing.
Well, that obviously isn't going to happen this year. Um, we've had the input from Anthony on the roads. And his suggestion was Oakland Farms and Sundown Road. He was in favor of keeping closed. I think that's coming from the county engineer. I'm comfortable with that.
Do we need to have, have a concern with, um, you know, our partner? Dyersville with regard to that road?
If I may, um, there won't be any motions today for this. We will simply take, I will take your feedback. And put it into, uh, a draft amended ordinance that would then come. Uh, before you to take a look at, at which point we would have the approval of a notice of public hearing to amend that ordinance. At, at no point, um, at that next meeting and that next public hearing, we would have the ability, ability to make changes. And then we start the process over again from there. Um, so this, this necessarily, I, I, I think it would be important to have a couple. Public hearings and we're going to as part of the process. Um, what I'm gathering is that we are. What I'm gathering is that we are likely to be very close to our, to our sunset date. And I will, our office will do our part to turn this around as quickly as possible. But we do have publishing deadlines and, and Wednesday newspapers that publish once a week that we are required to, to put in. So that's sort of, that's, that's one of the driving factors between our time crunches in most cases.
I would, it would be helpful to me if you would kind of use the model that our budget director does, which is to accomplish the goal of having this be the new ordinance fully published, our last date to do something is X. You do a good job of that Stella, telling us that the deadline to get it in the, to, the deadline for our action is this date to have it roll out and be, in your case, filed and published for the statutory law and in this case.
I can certainly do that. There are a few more variables in this equation. Um, because you can choose to waive or not waive the second and third reading, uh, depending on public input. So I can create a matrix that will give you every possible, uh, final date, uh, based on actions that the board may or may not take. Um, or we can just say, let's take it a step at a time in this case.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Assuming that we're, are we, would the board like to have this on the agenda for next week?
We'd have to, right, go.
Yeah, I'll add that to my list of things.
Thank you.
Next week is the evening meeting.
I'm sorry?
Next week is an evening meeting.
There won't be a public hearing next week. It'll simply be the notice of public hearing that'll be presented to the board. So there will be no public discussion next Tuesday.
We see the draft language of the ordinance.
Yes.
Is that going to be reviewed by Attorney May?
I will send it his way.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to second close public, public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Back in regular session. We will move along to, uh, approval of Platts. Have a resolution to approve the final plat, Denver Acres number two. Believe we have, uh, Amy on.
Yep, I'm here. Okay. So I'll go ahead. Platte survey of lot one and lot two of Denver Acres number two, consolidation and division of the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter. The southwest quarter of the northeast quarter and that part of the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter lying north of the road. All section 20 township 88 North range one east Vernon Township Dubuque County Iowa. The property is owned by Joseph Denver and is located 1.07 miles south of the city of Piasta along Pilot Grove Road with a total of 88.82 acres surveyed. The property is owned A1 agricultural and A2 agricultural residential on zoning case 020322. The purpose of the plat is to separate the existing home and buildings to sell to a relative to continue helping in the family farm operation. The survey creates two lots. Lot one has a total of 84.22 acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot two has a total of 4.60 acres surveyed with a home and buildings and will be sold to a relative. Lot one will use an existing field entrance off of Pilot Grove Road and lot two will use an existing residential entrance off of Pilot Grove Road.
The final plan?
Yeah, it's a final plat.
Okay, is he done? I did. I super brother McDonough. Okay, I will, I will second that motion.
Have a motion to second to approve the final plat of Denver Acres number two. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Actually have a resolution to approve the final plat, Kerprich Farm subdivision.
Okay, okay. Platte survey of lot one and lot two of Kerprich Farm subdivision comprised of lot two in the southeast quarter of the northwest fractional quarter and lot three in the south half of the southeast quarter, all in section 30, center township Dubuque County Iowa. The property is owned by Paul Kerprich and is located 0.35 miles southwest of the city of Graff along Girl Scout Road with a total of 39.99 acres surveyed. The property is owned A1 agricultural with a pending zoning case, well, it's actually approved zoning case now. Requesting to rezone 1.10 acres to A2 agricultural residential. The purpose of the plat is to allow for the construction of a new home that will be replacing the existing farmhouse. The survey creates two lots. Lot one has a total of 1.10 acres surveyed and will be the site of a new ho- home on the farm and will remain in current ownership. Lot two has a total of 38.89 acres surveyed with an existing farm home that will be removed and farm, farm buildings. And it will stay in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot one, we use a new residential entrance on entrance permit 2021-54. Lot two, we use an existing entrance off of Girl Scout Road.
Motion to approve the final plan.
I will second that.
Have a motion to second to approve final plat at Kerprich Farm subdivision. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat of Smith Acres number two. Amy.
Platte survey of lot one and lot two of Smith Acres number two, consolidation and division of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter, section 27 and lot two of Smith Acres, section 27. Township 90 North Range One East Jefferson Township Dubuque County Iowa. The property is owned by Robert Nannett Smith and is located 1.2 miles east of the city of Rickersville along Route three with a total of 48.12 acres surveyed. The property is owned A1 agricultural and R2 single family residential. The purpose of the plat is to be able to sell lot one to Martin Cass, the adjoining landowner, who will continue to crop farm the land. The survey creates two lots. Lot one has a total of 22.84 acres surveyed and will be sold to the adjoining neighbor and will remain in agricultural use. Lot two has a total of 25.28 acres surveyed with an existing, existing home agricultural buildings and a winery. Lot one, we use an existing field entrance off of Route three. Lot two, we use an existing residential entrance off of Route three.
I'll make a motion to approve the, for Smith Acres number two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of Smith Acres number two. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat, Taylor Farm subdivision.
Platte survey of Taylor Farm subdivision comprised of lot one and lot two in the northwest quarter of section six township 90 North Range One West Concord Township Dubuque County Iowa. The property is owned by John P. Taylor Declaration of Trust dated 8/23 of 2013 at all. And Barbara A. Taylor Declaration of Trust dated 3/23 of 2013 and is located 2.19 miles north of the city of Holy Cross with a total of 151.491 acres surveyed. The property is owned A1 agricultural with a pending, well, actually, this is an approved case. Um, 0415-22 to rezone 4.396 acres to A2 agricultural residential. The purpose for the plat is to adjust the lot line to include the driveway and row of trees that is being utilized by that parcel. The property owners plan on selling lot two to a family member in the future. The survey creates three lots. Lot one has a total of 75.797 acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot two has a total of 4.396 acres surveyed with a home, farm buildings and grain bins and will remain in current ownership. Lot three has a total of 71.298 acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot one, we use an existing field entrance off of Hidershite Road. Lot two and three, we use existing accesses off of Hidershite Road.
Wish to approve.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion to second to approve the final plat of Taylor Farm subdivision. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Amy.
Yep, thank you.
Go to the action items. We have a resolution approving the special events permit application for Dubuque County Energy District and the smoke stack that was tabled last week. Leave it was, um, just over some, uh, aiming issues.
Some what issues?
Think they had Dubuque Main Street instead of Dubuque County Energy District.
I don't see anything here that the city is allowing them to close the street. The plat includes a street closure. Normally puts these together for us. Is there a process for people to submit these things?
We use the special permit. This is normally used for road closures. Um, and it goes through our sheriff and our, um, uh, and our county attorney. This one is they want to use our parking lot. So it's not involved any county road. So this is the only one that I've ever seen. Um, this is their second time here using this permit. Um, because we did not have anything to be able to utilize county property. They provided their certificates of insurance. Um, I'm unaware if they have been approved by the city. Michaela Freiber is on Zoom here.
Scroll up to the other documents. I think they were to attach, um, proof that they were a nonprofit.
Yep, I have that.
I do like the fork and the spoon in our parking lot on the map. It's a nice touch. And that means there's going to be food there.
It's the nonprofit status. Sent in a photocopy of the proof of insurance. I, I'm just concerned, we, there's reasons we have, everybody usually roads checks for all the attachments and the compliance. So is this something that you're doing Dawn in, in human resources or?
Yep, I actually had our budget director as our risk manager, um, review the certificates of coverage to ensure that we are, um, that county is covered under their policy. So Stella Runney did confirm that. Um, I forwarded those to her and she was acceptable to those, um, documents.
Okay, sounds good. Make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion to second to approve the special events permit for Dubuque County Energy District. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Turpin Dodge for the purchase of a 2021 Dodge Ram 2500 crew cab four by four pickup truck.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion to second to approve the necessary documents with Turpin. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the service agreement with the Howard E. Nyhard Company Incorporated for actuarial, actuarial services for the fiscal year 22 full GASP 75 actuarial update, FY 23 interim GASP 75 actuarial update in fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23 Iowa 509A actuarial certificates for certifications for Dubuque County.
I made a motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion to second to approve the resolution. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for community foundation of greater Dubuque from the county's ARPA SL FRF allocation. In the amount of 100,000 for the equitable employment pathways. And for a motion to approve. There's no motion to move that forward. That. Next, we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for the community solutions of Eastern Iowa from the county's ARPA allocation. That is in the amount of 105,000 and that is a three-year, 35,000 a year.
Wish to approve.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion to second to approve the allocation for community solutions. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for Dubuque Main Street from the county's ARP funds. And that is in the amount of $130,000.
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Discussion. This was, um, Dan Lobianco has announced she's not going to be there any longer. And this program requires direct cultivation and with specific projects. And I would want to, I would, I would prefer to table this and find out if they're going to be able to complete this project. Our ARPA funds are limited and I, that's some significant change in who's going to do this project. I think it was Dan doing the work himself with regard to this. So.
I think it's fair enough. I will withdraw my motion.
Motion tabled then.
You don't need a motion to table. You can simply take no action.
Well, what did we do with the, uh, is there just, is community foundations application coming back again to then?
No, that's with taking no action.
For lack of a second, or for a motion.
There was no motion. So that's.
So I guess I would prefer to have a motion to table on the main, on the Duke Main Street project.
I will second that motion to table.
Have a motion and a second to table Dubuque Main Street allocation. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Actually have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for holy family Catholic schools from, uh, county's ARP allocation. And that was in the amount of 400,000.
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second. Any discussion? Have a motion to second to approve the allocation to holy Catholic, holy family Catholic schools for the childhood center for 400,000. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, Nate?
Nate.
Here's, next, we have a resolution to approve the allocation of project funds for Northeast Iowa Community College from the county's ARP allocation.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the entrepreneurial resource hub funding in the amount of 400,000. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Here is. Next, we have a resolution to authorize the chair to sign a letter to IEDA supporting, uh, community development block grant owner occupied housing programs. Thank you, Ed. Ed did that letter.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion to second to approve the, uh, ordering, uh, documents for CDBG grant. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the federal allocation of flood control monies to local fire departments.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second to approve the federal allocation. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve tax sale certificates. There's two lots, uh, were involved, total of $635.
To approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion to second to approve the tax sale certi- certificates. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have resolution to approve duplicate warrant to Andrew Harworth in the amount of 12599.
No, is this gentleman, um, law enforcement?
Yes.
Then shout to the auditor, the personal address was listed in the correspondence. And I know that we the back the blue bill at the state asks us to be careful about that.
I believe the, uh,
The, uh, the person requesting the duplicate warrant provided that address and given open records laws in our office, uh, and no statement being made to redact that information. I don't see that our office, uh, had any issue with putting this memo out there.
I'm just asking, is there anything we want to do about that? You know, the problem with the back the blue bill is that it's, it does some things, but it doesn't do all the other things.
There's a, there's a program called Safe at Home that does address, uh, law enforcement at home addresses that they can enroll. They can choose to opt into that program. Um, I, again, this is a, this is. I, again, this is a, this is an employee who provided that information via email to us. I'm not sure what other steps we could have taken here.
Motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
A motion to second to approve the duplicate warrant. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have Communication City of Dyersville Consolidated Dyersville Economic Development District Amendment. Receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion to second to receive and file, City of Dyersville Consolidated Economic Development District Amendment. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have appointments, open vacancies, informational only. Of personnel requisitions, motion to approve the personnel requisition for permanent full-time victim witness coordinator.
Note that the name is there and the resignation is there. I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion to second to approve the personnel requisition for victim witness coordinator. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for Assistant County Attorney Grade Two.
Motion to deny or motion to table. There's no name indicated here. Who's the person being replaced? This motion to table is my motion.
I'd agree. There's no name on it.
Is that a second to my motion?
I will second the table. A motion to second to table the requisition for Assistant County Attorney. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion to approve the personnel requisition for Permanent Full-Time Assistant Director for the Health Department. That would be to replace Samantha.
A motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion to second to approve the permanent full-time assistant director for the Health Department. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Going to public comments at this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are concerned to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries and Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board?
I do. Thank you. Jackie Ray, 30254 Golf Course Road, Dyersville, Iowa. I just want to thank the board for all of your consideration of utilizing these once-in-a-lifetime funds through the American Rescue Plan out in the county. I've never really before felt the support that I do with this group of supervisors for really reaching out into the communities, the smaller communities that don't have the financial resources to do these types of projects. And this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity really assists and provides a need that is, is there in all of the communities. In, in the community of Dyersville, we have a rural food pantry that is serving all of Western Dubuque County. And I know they have a request, just like, you know, the city of Eppworth and Luxembourg. I really appreciate the thoughtful consideration that you guys give all of these requests. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie. Do we have anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone online, Kevin?
We do not.
Does anyone wish to have a short recess or do we want to move?
I don't need a recess, but I'd like to ask staff, but.
Just seeing if anybody needed a break or go into work sessions. We can go into our 10:15 work session with ARP application, City of Luxembourg. Roger. Good.
How are you doing? Is the question.
Roger Overbreckman, 101 Hill Street. I'm the mayor of Luxembourg. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for just hearing our proposal because it's a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city of Luxembourg. Try to get some money for this. Our project is very simple. We're trying to hard surface our road for our commercial property. But before we get there, I want to tell you a little history of why we're there. We started out in about 1990 or 1992. The DNR kind of shut the city of Luxembourg down. We had no sewer. We had no water. They had some few problems with that. Plus, we were landlocked. So we had some public hearings after that and I was on the, just got on the city council, didn't know what I was doing. And we had all this, we had spott every person in town up at the school. We talked about what we should do first. So we got the water fixed. So we got sewer fixed. And after much deliberation, a lot of years of doing this, we finally got ECIA involved. ECIA started out telling us we've got to get an engineering firm and we had to get partners to pay for this project. So we got the engineering firm, got us some rough numbers. And then we had ECIA work on all the other aspects of the program. Once we got that settled and we were going to go to the sewer first because we thought that was a major problem. So we had ECIA went to USDA. At that time, we got a USDA loan. We got CBDD grants to pay for this. It was 1.1 million dollars for a town of 245. That's huge, huge amount of money. And we got some, a very, we got 400,000 dollars worth of grant money to include with that. At the same period of time, a farm came up for sale in town. The Breeze Farm went for sale. The city purchased that ground. We needed it for one reason, we needed it for two reasons, for expansion and a place to put our lift station for our sewer. Everything worked out perfect. We got it for a reasonable amount of money at the time. Actually, it was a great amount of money for what we're paying for right now. Few years later, after that was developed, we says, well, let's go try to get our water system, which takes us three or four more years. We don't have all the funds. We got to go use it. ECIA again, went to USDA again, got money from both of them also. We got CDBG grants. But we always need a partner because we're so small, we can't get the funds. So we got the funds, got our water system in. We got our sewer system in and we're waiting. Well, we got to get some people in here now. So let's start our subdivision because we can't get a contractor to come into Luxembourg to develop the ground. Because they didn't think they could make enough money doing it. So the city did something off the wall. We started developing ourselves. So we got 16 lots in the first section. 14 lots are sold. So we're doing very well with that. But then we had a couple of commercial properties that came into us. They wanted to buy some property. And we couldn't afford to do anything for these guys because, you know, it costs four, five, six, 700,000 dollars to do all this, all this work. And we thought about this and thought about this and says, the only way we can do this, if we get a partner, but this time we took a private partner. Structural, or Progressive Structures came to us, says, we will, we will do all your sewer, water, put the road in for a land swap. So that's what we did. We, we bartered. It was the only way the city of Luxembourg could do this. So he did the work at a set amount that we worked with IAW so we know how much it costs to do this on the average. And that's the way we figured it out. He got so much land for that. And it worked great for our city. And then down the road, we have to put a hard-service road in. He comes up to us again. He says, I can't help you with that, but I want to expand. He wants to do pre-cast pipe and manholes and catch base and all that stuff. And I said, well, we really don't have the funds. He says, well, he asked me about TIF. I says, we're already using TIF funds to recuperate our costs from the sewer and the water and some of the other things throughout the town. And we really don't have, you know, we only get 20,000 dollars a year in TIF. Because we don't have the huge, you know, tax base. The industry's in our, in our renewal zone. But how many small towns, you know, they even use TIF at our size? In Dubuque County, I don't think there's any.
Worthington.
Oh, oh, sorry, Worthington. Okay, there's two of us. But we've done this since, well, ECIA set me up with this in about 2004, 2003, we started this. And it's a good program for a small town. I hope everybody would do this. But that's beside the point. What we're trying to look for is getting the hard-service money for you guys. We're requesting 250,000 dollars on a 414,000 dollar project. That's about 60% of the project. I feel that's going to help the county and us. We're increasing the tax base. He's already have, he's got 25, he'll have 25 employees working for it. So that doubles the amount of employees in the city of Luxembourg alone, just for him coming here. And I think it's the best investment you guys can make. I know it might be off the wall. You're looking for a guy to put a street in, but I think it's a plus for the county and for our citizens of Luxembourg. If any questions for me right now, that's all I really have to say.
Anthony was here earlier and he had said about RISE grants should.
RISE grants will not be covered though. They have a real strict, we went through this with ECIA. RISE grants will not cover unless it's completely industrial property. So if we had, well, we had a chance to get Benkeys in Luxembourg when this time happened. We'd had another, be like Benkeys or scale models or something like that, but it's got to be industrial or the DNR or the DOT will not cover the funds. We went through ECIA for this and we've had Shander looking through the whole situation. Shander says, we have no funding source for you. Zero.
But Anthony said, I thought I'd talk you.
I should have talked, I should have said that in my statement, but we have no funding source through the DOT. And if you go to mayor's meeting, you hear me complain about this all the time. How to get money for roads.
Normal.
You're right, Farley, it is. I'm complaining about something, but just try to get money. That's just the way it is.
Can Anthony bring up the RISE grant when we were talking about that?
Yeah, we were talking out of school about you this morning.
It does not apply to us.
Yeah. He said, he, he said, there's really no, no funding sources. He confirms most of what you're saying. And then he just said, maybe that would be one.
And we've, we've checked that already. It is a no-go.
Yeah. And so your request for us is how much money?
250,000 dollars and our part will be 163. Excuse me, one second. It would have been a little more organized. Right there it is. Our section would be 164,691 dollars. That's about a 60-40 split. And our funding, we're going to have to go down the road because I'm going to have to budget this in for a couple of years. As you looked at the documents, that's what I had in the plan. We're still going to try to get some TIF funds later on, but right now we have, it's going to take us five or six more years just to get our money back that we haven't invested through TIF now.
You won't have any trouble getting this project done inside the timeline?
No, we will not. I'm hoping to get it done sooner, but like I said, we got to do the next budgets here. I ain't, I don't have the money
Right.
now, so we have to go down, down another budget cycle at least.
So if we gave you a grant, would you be able to go back to this person and, and maybe your private industry is still a partner?
Oh, I'm sure we can. No, I take that back. We will not be able to do that. And because he does not do road paving. He makes the roads. He doesn't pave the roads. So we have to go to a different contractor for that. So it's going to be an outside, we're going to have to go to a bonding, a bonding agency and get bonded for that kind of money. And then we'll have to repay it back through TIF and, and our tax base.
Okay. So here's the question, the devil's question.
Go ahead.
So you're asking for 164?
I'm asking for 250,000. We have, we have to also put in 164,000.
Is, okay, so 164 is the city's component?
Yes.
If this board would grant, let's say 50,000 dollars, five zero, 50,000 dollars, which in another lifetime was a lot of money. Does that help you or?
No. I hate to say it, but no, because otherwise I'm going to have to go out and get 350,000 dollars out of 200 or out of 110 homes and another five businesses. Feasibly, we can't afford to do it. We just can't unless we get somebody else. What we're looking for, if we get the money from you, we're looking for other companies coming in. We have another 14 acres that can be subdivided for other companies. Plus, we got two other acre lots alongside these. So we can keep on developing if we get the road. Most people, yeah, I can see the property back there, but if I don't got a paved road, I don't want to come here. We found that out when we built our subdivision. You had to grab a road going to lots. You don't have it paved, they won't buy it. And I think that's, it's going to help if we can get a road in. I'm sure we can get somebody else to come in here. Just my thoughts. Go ahead, Jay.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. It sounds like, I didn't know you were at this that long.
Oh, we've been at this a long time.
Thank you for your service in your town for that many years. It, it, it takes conviction and dedication. You've obviously shown that. Two questions. So on your diagram, you show lot one, two, and three.
Yes.
So would this road provide access and hopefully future development for all three of those lots? Is that your plan?
Yes, it will. It has access to all of them.
Okay.
Okay, right where the start, the red marking is, there is a small lot right there. It's an acre lot. Right next, then you got lot two. Lot two is now 10 acres. They have purchased 10 acres from us. That's where Progressive Structures is at. Where the number four is, that is now his property line going straight to the back. But he has 10 acres of property there. He has about a 3.1 million dollar building on the, on the lot right now.
Um, yeah, so my Google Maps doesn't show this, which is interesting. So I'm, I'm glad you're filling in the details, so.
Yeah, and also lot one, that can be subdivided many different ways we want. We also considering putting a road off of Highway 52. A straight on the north or on the west side. You've got another access to the lower section in case we want to access top and bottom. We also got another lot, 1.4 is lot three. Everyone's accessed off that road. Plus, where the Park Avenue is in the bottom. We have a lot down there also, which we're considering for a fire station in the future or a city building. We will have access going back up to there. So we have a loop so you can, the fire trucks want to come in, they can go around and.
That's my question. So you're on to that. And so good, so maybe related to this map and certainly the one I'm looking at on Google, where does this road connect to?
Highway 52 North.
Uh, well, certainly on, on, on the one side coming out, but then kind of, you mentioned their second road or?
Both of them are Highway 52.
52, okay. So you're going to run it all the way, it's all the way down to 52 and would come out roughly by Main Street, by First Avenue?
First Street is where it comes out of.
First Street, excuse me. Yeah, First Street.
Yes. You can see that it goes in the corner, just about right to, it's the Highway 52 bypass is what it is, the Highway 3.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. So it does it, okay, roughly.
Just a horseshoe.
It's just a horseshoe is what it is. It comes right back around through the residential area on that side.
Through Second Avenue or connecting?
Through Second Avenue, yes.
Okay, okay. Now I'm with you. So I was trying to figure out how you got to First Street, but through Second Avenue.
Second Avenue. So we got, our, our, we have a buffer between our commercial property and our residential. We put the park in between the two. And right where that red line is, where the separation between residential and commercial is. So the lot that we're looking for on, it'd be numbered, lot number, well, it's not really numbered. It's where our project part starts. You see the red marking up there? That is going to be like for a storage building or something like that, which is a, we don't want to have a, we want to have a buffer between the residential. So that's where we already decided, that's the only thing we're going to allow it to go up in there or a cold storage facility. Let's say, someone wants to put seakorn in there or something like that for storage. We don't want to have a business running out of there.
Good. I, I think I better understand your, your project. Very, very excited and glad you're here and, and you have my support for this. I think that's exactly what Jackie Ray was saying is that we have the means, the capability and certainly the federal funds to, to help our smaller communities and our moderate-sized communities. And I'm here for you.
I appreciate that, Jay.
Ian?
I always like watching what you do there.
That's good.
Larry Nagel uses your.
Larry Nagel is one outstanding man. I worked with him for years. He got this, all our water and sewer for us. He got me the TIF set up. He was a great guy at, obviously, I.
He used Luxembourg as his training.
Facility.
Well, to teach me how to do so many things. He said, I'm going to show you what we did here. Well, to teach me how to do so many things. He said, I'm gonna show you what we did here.
Well, he, he, he did a great job for us.
I hope we can do this for you, Roger.
I got one more comment. I says, I am so glad that you guys are looking out the county for these projects. I might not agree with everything, whatever city wants, but every city has their own priorities. I'm glad you guys are funding this. This is great. Like Eppworth going for their project, I'm a hundred percent behind that. This is great. We gotta, we gotta, the county, county city's gotta stick together. That's the way I'm looking at it. You guys are helping us right now. So anything else for me?
Couldn't agree more. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys. By the way, thank you. You did a wonderful job.
All right, there you go.
Next we have the city of Eppworth.
Alrighty, before I start, I wanna thank my city clerk and my deputy clerk, Janet Berger and Jesse Kennedy have done a tremendous job. Put in a lot of effort in this grant and this PowerPoint and getting things ready to go. So I wanna thank them a lot. When I was first elected mayor, it was only six years ago, so I haven't been at this as long as, uh, Roger has. But Iowa State had just put a report out saying that took on all the small cities in, in Iowa. And Eppworth came up pretty good, but we were lacking in amenities. And so since I've been elected, one of my big goals has been to improve our amenities in the city of Eppworth. You know, amenities helped to attract people. They helped to keep people in town and they just make it a nicer place to live. So about a year ago, we did a survey and we asked our citizens what amenities were important to them. And the number one priority was a new bathroom at East Park. Well, we've almost got that finished. It should be ready to go this summer. The second, um, priority for the citizens was lights at the ballpark. And that's what we're working on now is to, um, get lights for the ballpark and that's what we're asking for your help with. Next slide. Next slide, okay. Um, this is a current map of the area. You can see the lower field. I brought a little, little, this is actually a little cat toy.
Oh, yeah.
You can see this is the lower diamond. This is where our softball and, um, little league kids play and we already have lights down there. This is BJ Featherstone Park. It is our field. It is, um, the, where the Eppworth Orioles, bigger kids play, bigger kids, where the adults play. And that's where we would like lights. So our project primarily in is for the lights, but we also want to, right here, we have a shelter with, um, the bleachers underneath it. We need new bleachers, so we would like to add in the bleachers. We also have one to put in a path from the parking lot to the bleachers so that handicap and elderly people don't have a difficult time getting there. So, um, if you wanna go to the next slide. We also want to increase the size of our parking lot. We want to line it so people will park in the right spots. Our, our parking lot right now is gravel and so you have some people who park close together. Some people leave a lot of space. It just, you know how that goes. So, um, it also is going to help with the elderly and the, uh, handicap people because a hard surface is gonna be a lot easier for them to get to the area by the diamond. Go to the next slide. Okay, you can see right now, our current usage, we have the Eppworth Orioles semi-pro team. We have the Eppworth Orioles Babe Ruth team and the Western Dubuque freshman baseball, um, Bobcats also use that team, that, um, that field. So we get, it gets a lot of use. Um, we put a lot of work into the, improving the field. We recently redid the pitcher's mound. The athletic club right now is working really hard on, uh, putting in a backstop. And so, um, if we could get lights there, it would really increase the usage because we could have the night games, more tournaments, um, more groups coming in. Okay, next one. Okay, earlier this spring, Go the Distance came to us and they asked if they could use our field for, um, their, some of their games this summer when they're having that big tournament. They wanted to spread out and use other fields for some of the games. And we said yes. So we were out there with the representative on a drizzly cold spring morning, looking at the field and unfortunately they turned us down because we don't have lights. They wanna be able to play games all day and all night. And so we lost that source of income with all those people from all over coming in order to, um, because we didn't have lights. So we really would like to get lights there. You can see the, the numbers there. I'm not gonna, not gonna read the slide to you and you've also got it in your, in your packet. Okay, next one. So we feel like this project will have an economic benefit for our community. If we get those people coming into town, they'll stop at Silkers, they'll stop at the Pizza Factory, they'll stop at Locals, they'll stop at Route Twenty Boutique, Barrett Auto, the Quick and Handy, all of those local businesses will receive, um, an extra stream of customers coming from these additional people coming into town. Okay, go to the last slide. We have looked at other sources. We applied for Hinson Grant. Unfortunately, we were not selected to go on to the next level. But we are asking you for between three hundred and, three hundred and ninety five and four hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Those are the, the range because of the, the changes in prices of materials today. Um, and the city's commitment is about eighty or is about twenty percent of that. So we would be, here's my number. So we would be committing between ninety eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and a hundred and six thousand, five hundred and fifty seven dollars. And as Roger was just saying, those are big numbers for a city the size of Eppworth. We have other projects that have to come first. We have streets, we have water, we have sewer maintenance and other things that are very important. So we're hoping that, that you'll go help us out. Will we go ahead with this grant if we don't, or with this project if we don't get the grant? Yes, it was a priority of our citizens and we need to go ahead with it. Will we be able to do it this year without your help? No. Next year, probably not. The year after, that would be a maybe. We might be able to get it done by then. We might be able to have the money set aside by then. But we would really appreciate your support, um, with this project. And now I'm gonna stop talking and we have a number of supporters here. If any one of them would like to use the last three or four minutes, they can come up and.
My name is Gary Ganson. Uh, obviously I appreciate the work that the city has tried to do with this. I've been involved with the city of Eppworth and politics for a lot of years. Uh, I was on the park board for a lot of years, city council, and we've had this idea for a long time. The problem is, is that, I mean, it's great that we think we can possibly do it in three years if you don't help us. But we've been at this for fifteen to twenty years, hoping to get this done. And with the cost of street materials and all the other needs that an expanding city, and we're fortunate to be in a, in an expanding area. But we have dated water lines, we have dated sewer lines. So every time we go to do a street, we have to include that, which takes some of our tax revenue and, and all that. I mean, every, every city around here has it. Fortunately, we're in a prior, we, our priorities, we, we do have a building that services our library well and should service us well into the future. But there again, everybody puts priorities in different fashion. So please, please consider this here. I personally think that without your help, without this one time source of funding that, that's been created by the federal government, I think it's gonna be a lot longer down the road than what we would like. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor Sandy.
Oh, okay, we have Nick Elliott, who is the president of our athletic club.
Yeah, so thank you, everybody, uh, for your time here today. I apologize for not being able to join in person. Uh, I started a new job today, so I'm getting a few minutes to step away from that and, and talk with you all. Appreciate the commentary so far. Really what this means to Eppworth is we have a very large high school in town and they can't play on our baseball fields. The main team, the, the varsity team goes to Farley to play. They can't even practice on our field just because we don't have the lights. Because our backstop is not the way that needs to be. We don't have the spectator seating, so this encompasses a lot of things. And, and for me, having played on that field a number of years ago and lived in the town and been a part of it for a long time, this is really a source of joy and pride for a, a number of people that have really done a great job of trying to keep the field in good shape. But also, eh, you know, we try to make Eppworth a baseball town, a known baseball town, and this really hinders us unfortunately. So I really wanna pledge my support for it and, and I hope that you consider this very heavily, knowing that we are a small town, uh, but we do have a lot of pride, especially in baseball and sporting in general. And, uh, thank you for everything that you have done and appreciate the time you give me today.
Thank you, Nick.
I think you can see the, the urgency that the town feels. Nick's taking time off from his first day of work. We have supporters in the stands here, one of which canceled an appointment this morning so that he could be here. So, um, it really means a lot to the city of Eppworth. And I think our ten minutes is up, so we'll take your questions.
Questions, Ian?
I do. Hi Sandy, I have a couple of questions. Um, ECIA, we just sent, signed a letter. Supervisor Chair Potoff is gonna sign a letter today with ECIA to go forward, is that today or last week, with their baseball exploration. Are you familiar with that?
I don't believe I am.
That was last week.
It was last week? And the purpose of that is for them to search out grants as well to help with the athletic facilities in response to Field of Dreams coming. So I think that there's folks seeing the same need you are and, um, so ECIA will be, I think, a partner as you continue to do some of your improvements. Did you say it was the Ashley Hinson Grant that?
Yes, yes, we applied for the Ashley Hinson Grant and did not go forward.
Uh, maybe that was my signature. Maybe that was, I was the wrong person to be the support person. Who knows? Did you, do you expect that Go the Distance will pay a rental fee to use your fields? Do you know?
I think so, yes.
So they, they will. That will help your athletic association.
God, Hudson, I am on the athletic club also. So I had lined up with Roman, right? I think he's the man in charge of Go the Distance stuff and I forwarded him onto the city to meet with Ronnie and Sandy. And unfortunately couldn't do it because of the lights, but yes, they will pay two hundred and fifty dollars per field per day, light usage, the whole thing. They'll sign a contract with us going forward and it was really a hope of ours to get them to come this year. Didn't work, but in the future we'd like to. We do have other stuff that we are starting to put in place to host more tournaments. So we had two tournaments already this spring, but they could only use our lower field. They couldn't use our upper diamond, which potentially would increase the revenue there too.
Great. Thank you. And then my last question, Sandy, when you and I were just chatting, um, I think it was last week, the week before, we talked about reusing other lights. Did that, are you still exploring that?
We're still kind of exploring that. We talked about that. We've looked into it. We've, um, checked with, with Lyle about that. One of the things that we're concerned about is those lights are ten years old. So how much longer are they going to last us? The other thing is, we plan on putting in LED lights. And I don't know if you know the difference between costs between LED and regular lights. We can probably cut our light cost at least fifty percent each time we use them by the LEDs. And so I think that's a pretty big factor going forward for, uh, for wanting to go with the new lights as opposed to the ones that, uh, Lyle had for us.
And then the same awful question that I ask people, which is you're here asking for a dollar amount and is there another critical point where a funding at that level also allowed us the project to go forward?
I'm probably gonna look at Janet for this. I'm not sure exactly what that would be. I mean, we will continue to look for other grants and depending on what grants come in, um, that would help us, but I, I don't know. First came into play when Destination Iowa announced some funding and we're disappointed to find out that they really only wanna consider projects of five million or more. So kinda hurts the little guy. And they kinda put that cap on it. The other thing is the athletic club groups and their other partners have just recently put in a project that's, um, in the range of sixty thousand. So they're trying to do significant upgrades as well. This project for the lights has been going on for thirty years and it's just always been out of reach. So it's kinda where we're at.
So the total that you need is the three ninety five?
That's all I have. I'm Janet Berger, city clerk.
This does not include, we are in the process right now of, yeah, it's right around fifty five thousand securing for a backstop project. We are pretty close. We got a ten thousand dollar grant from the Minnesota Twins to apply to that, um, which we got a ten thousand dollar grant last year that went to some other stuff too. So that's been a good source for us. Um, and this will go along with our backstop project.
It's just that the lot, the lights are so expensive, you know, and then the parking is so important and that's so expensive and, and everything just seems to be just a little bit out of our reach.
The, uh, parking lot is gravel.
Yes, the parking lot is gravel.
Light ball there for several years. And, uh, love the ball fields. The lights, I understand. Parking lot, okay, if you gotta wait a few years in a parking lot, that's understandable. I mean, I get the light thing with the high school there and I always wondered why there weren't lights at that stadium because my son played for WD, you know, so. I'd be supportive of the lights. I think, uh, you know, we have to kinda be careful with where we put the funding too. So I would, I, I would probably not be as supportive of the parking lot. I know there's no lines, but you know what? People don't see lines very well either most days, so, uh, I know that comes as a shock, but that's just my two cents.
Go back to the slide that has the parking lot on it. We're also expanding the size of the parking lot. When we have a game at the lower diamond, if we have a game at the upper diamond, to get enough, yes. So the additional parking is something that is really a necessity.
Just our small prairie league, you know, our town league softball tournament and semi, no, it was freshman baseball, I think, had a game at the same exact time. And yeah, we had cars parked all the way down to the dog park back into town, which is not, you know, is a safety concern to have, uh, vehicles parked on the road at the same time. And it happens numerous times throughout the summer.
The parking lot cost, it was like it was a hundred and fifty two thousand dollars or one fifty seven?
Hundred and fifty something, a hundred and fifty two, I think.
You go back, there it is. Is, so it looks like the parking lot is one fifty two?
If, if I may, Gary Ganson again. I wanna point out with the cost of lights, way back when we started this idea twenty five or thirty years ago, lights would've cost us a hundred thousand. Obviously, we didn't have that revenue. Now they're, they're three hundred thousand. And where is it gonna go if we have to wait another ten, fifteen years? So, so my point is, is without this help and inflation, I, you know, we really need your help.
Always gonna be just out of reach. I just thought it was in, just very clever for you, Sandy, to be looking at being able to purchase perhaps lighting that might work. But sometimes the bargain isn't, is gonna actually, in the long run, right, be cost, not cost effective.
Right. I know, um, my husband Tommy's worked with, uh, little reflections in the park. And when they switched from their regular light bulbs to the LED bulb, their cost for electricity went from in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars down to about four thousand five hundred. So the savings in going to LED, I know, is just tremendous.
Well, as you know, Eppworth's my hometown, so, uh, one of us.
Yeah, you kinda lived in the backyard.
Born in, yeah, exactly. When I was born in Xavier Hospital, uh, they brought me to Eppworth and that's. Born in, yeah, exactly. When I was born in Xavier Hospital, they brought me to Eppworth and that's where myself and my. All my siblings, all eight siblings and my mom and dad were raised in Eppworth and so. Growing to high, grade school there and then high school and having a paper route. You know, I remember in the seventies, there are very few houses built on my paper route. Maybe one in three years in the seventies. And so. As I moved away and lived in Dubuque for a few years and then Piastza for about 18 years. I'd always go back to Eppworth and see the progress. You know, your progress in Main Street and on Third Avenue to the high school and. Certainly at the park and the fire and EMS and all the new subdivisions as well. So a lot of progress over the years that Eppworth can be very proud of in addition to, you know, the other communities along Highway 20 and all the. The small towns surrounding. So you have momentum. You've done a lot of work. You're, you, once again, just like Roger, I'll say congratulations for your service and thank you for. For being there. I know being a mayor and being on council and just being active in the community. In a small town can, sometimes you think, and you're pushing a pretty big boulder to try to get big things done. And so for us, if this is your priority. I would support that. Because Eppworth will always be in my heart, but related to my chair here. It just makes good economic and government sense to support your projects as well.
I was out for your first ever farmer's market.
Oh, I had to leave around nine o'clock, but it was, it was really nice.
A lot of vibrancy and a lot of people walking around. I stood in line at Silkers. So that's fun when you get to stand in line. That's always fun.
That's because, that's because you get to talk to all the people. If, if you don't have a line.
Really, it really, a lot going on that morning. So was into locals and saw her big expansion in the back. That community room that she's, it's, there's just a tremendous smoke going on.
Yeah, we're doing well. Thank you.
Next we have the Rural Community Food Pantry.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Burlidge. I reside at 29474 Rockville Road, Dyersville. I'm here today on behalf of the Rural Community Food Pantry. And I'd really like to thank you for your time and consideration of our request. The mission of our pantry is to gather and share grocery products with our neighbors in need. The Rural Community Food Pantry is a bridge between America's food bounty and those who are struggling and cannot help themselves. Our pantry was created in 1986 when a local bank closed its doors unexpectedly. This closing created a great need for food assistance in our community. Our board consists of community volunteers with over 50 years of combined service. In the last 36 years, many things have changed in our area. March of 20 brought COVID-19. We saw a great increase in our, to those in need in our surrounding communities. In January of 20, pre-COVID, we had 45 households with 164 people visit our community, our pantry. In January of 21, we had 76 households and 244 people. In January of 22, 90 households and 267 people. The people visiting our pantry have doubled. These people come from all walks of life. They are the elderly, the veterans, they are disabled. They are the working poor. They are the young and they are hungry. These people are primarily from Western Dubuque County. Dyersville, Farley, Eppworth, Piastza, Bernard, Cascade. Holy Cross, Luxembourg, Rickersville, New Vienna and Worthington. We have a few that come from Onslow, Colesburg, Manchester and Earlville. And we are feeding these people. Our current space is about 760 square feet. We are located in an alley, on a hill, in the basement of a building. We have two steps down into the facility. The steps are a hazard when we are bringing food and supplies into our pantry. They are also a hazard when we are loading food out into the vehicles of those in need. The cement floor in our facility is not even. We have had water seep in when it rains. We work around support poles, a furnace and a water heater. In April, the scouts held their annual food drive and they brought in about 3,000 pounds of food. With so little counter space, it is a challenge to unload, sort and put away everything without tripping over one another. Our pantry also runs an angel program. This program provides two boxes of food for households for the holiday season. One perishable and one non-perishable. We also provide gifts to children. In 2021, we provided food to approximately 230 households and gifts for 360 children. Each year, we struggle to find a facility that can house this event. Every year, it gets harder and harder to find a home. We feel we have exhausted all resources and it's time to move forward. We have been searching for a permanent food. Permanent home for the pantry and the angel program for several years. And we feel this facility is right for our needs. We will have the space we need to run our programs more efficiently. Having enough space and shelving to accept donations. And provide a service to those in need in the surrounding communities. The new pantry will be located in an area of the community that is easy to find, but private enough for confidentiality. It is handicap accessible. Load in and load out will be safe for our volunteers and those that we serve. As a nonprofit organization, we cannot afford to purchase this building on our own. The funds that we have requested is only a portion of what we need. We have been working diligently the last few years to be able to move forward to a permanent home. This pantry will be able to put the, about 15% towards this project. Leaving over 67,000 yet to obtain for the building. We have to keep in mind that we still need to provide our normal services. We still have to have funds available to run our regular programs and serve the people in our communities. We'll be looking to businesses in our areas for match opportunities, other grants. And any philanthropic people for additional support of this project. We'll be working to obtain additional funds through the CARES Act for equipment that we'll need in this facility. In the last 36 years, many things have changed in our surrounding community. One thing that has stood the test of time is that is our mission. To gather and share grocery products with our neighbors in needs. The Rural Community Food Pantry is a bridge between America's food bounty and those who are struggling and cannot help themselves. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Lisa. What was your total ask, Lisa?
175.
175, okay. And that present is what percent of the?
61, 61%.
61%, okay. Jay?
The, the address of your desired location is what? Trying to look for the building on the map.
Is. Fifth, Fifth Street? I don't remember exactly. Fifth Street Northwest.
That area is. And is, is that a defined location that you, you vetted out or is that flexible based upon. Where you're currently at in your project? Are you still considering other options?
We're not. We have looked at purchasing a lot and actually building a facility. And then we found this building available for sale. And we could save a lot of money by moving forward with an already existing building with the cost of. Equipment and prices right now.
But you feel comfortable that this will, will serve your needs and serve the public as well?
Yes, definitely. I mean, we're going from 760 square feet to. Just over 4,000. So I mean, it's substantial space for. We'll have the ability to not turn down donations because right now we run out of space. People want to donate. We can't take it. We don't have enough space to take that donation in at times.
And it appears the, the access in and out of the, the building would be much more accommodating as well.
Yes, very much so.
Thank you. Anne?
Hi Lisa.
Hi Anne.
The, when you set up your new building, will folks be able to do a shopper experience? Will they get to go and choose? Products or will it still be by? Products that you put together for them in a box?
Pre-COVID, we did have them come into the facility and, and kind of walk through. I'm not sure exactly what we'll do at this time. It's going to depend on how we set it up and, and what we can make work. I'm sure there'll be adjustments as we move forward. It would be our goal that they could come in and choose different items. So we try to make sure that when we give them something that they're going to use it. And not just throw it away because we don't want to waste anything that's given.
I have always appreciated that you have written grant applications to the McDonough Foundation. That you're, what you say is actually what you do. You just continue to write grants to fill the needs. That you find and I admire that because I think that that's the ongoing story of. Of, it's a whole other facet of nonprofit. You know, it used to just be charity and now there's this whole other record keeping component as well. And the Angels Program will run out of your center as well.
Yes.
Right now, doesn't the Angels Program go up and down somebody's basement stairs? Isn't it stored in someone's home?
We do have storage in multiple facilities. People's homes store some, some, we have an area bank that stores things for us. Through the year until we need it. We pull it out in October, use it through the holiday season and then. Put things back.
I would just remember reading in the, in the commercial, just some of the comments about. Okay, that space is full and now diverting to another location to fill the Angels Program as well. To my colleagues, I would note that the $175,000 is exactly the same funding. That we gave to the Dubuque Food Pantry with their request to move to their new building. Jackson Street to White Street. So, you know, it's a, it's a doable thing in terms of helping. Food pantries. It's a modest request. I know you use the Red Basket product there as well. And I appreciate that for those in the community who have that on that need, so. Great, John, just truly brilliant. And I see other familiar faces. So I know you have. You have a crew that, that will accomplish things for you.
Thank you.
I have nothing further.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Should we recess for five minutes?
I will second that.
I have a motion to second to recess for five minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Recession until 11:50. All the board of supervisors back in the session? Sorry, Jay, we were kind of over our five minute recess. Next we have a work session, discussion and tentative funding allocation for ERP applications. We were to the. External for the investment in sewer and water, if I'm not mistaken. He did the McCoke River watershed management for 42,000. The city of Bangs then was moved forward for 300,000. Further discussion. The city of Bangston was moved forward for three hundred thousand. Further discussion regarding that. Good. About to see if they could, uh, come up with some matching funding or something. Anybody hearing more on that?
Ted Raver, I was out several days last week and I was unable to, during my time here, coordinate with the city of Bangston about that request. But, uh, I intend to do that this week.
Okay.
So Chair, what is it we're expecting to do today to decide on? External.
I wanted to run through those, just to see if there was any update on those.
Oh, I see. To get updates. Okay.
Well, and if we follow our same procedure for the last series of meetings, we would, would make decisions.
Great. Well, we were, I know for Bangston, they were, we were looking for some other funding because of, there's some issues with, uh, church and state.
Yeah, I was talking about all of them, not necessarily just, just Bangston, but that's, uh, you know, we, we've been stumbling on the process for multiple meetings. So I was trying to get ahead of that.
Any ones that we have?
I'll jump in on Bangston. It's, you know, this is the hardest one. Uh, you know, I could see the Bangston Church. We just covered Upworth. And so I lived on the north end right by that park and I could see the Bangston Church every day from my backyard, the steeple. The city of Bangston, you know, it's, there's either eight or thirteen, I forget the exact numbers, of homes and or hookups. And the dollar amount is, is probably per capita one of the largest. So it's just a hard one to, to accomplish without, uh, for the fewest amount of people with a significant investment. I know it's a need. Uh, you know, you need good sewer, you need obviously clean water, clean wells. But that's the struggle when you, when you have such a small community, uh, left to make those decisions. So that's, that's really, that's, that's my only observation at this point. I'm not ready to fund it today. And make that decision, nor am I willing to write it off. But, uh, this one will be one of the more challenging ones to, to resolve and fund.
Right. And I would agree with that. Hopefully, maybe you can get with them again, Ed, see if, if they can come up with some matching funds or something. It's a pretty heavy ask for a small town. I mean, million, over half a million dollars for, I think there were seven houses, if I'm not mistaken.
Eight, eight households, thirteen people.
Yeah. And so one of the other things for my, my board colleagues, I don't know if this weighs on you. And so my understanding is City of Rickardsville, who also asking for municipal sewer upgrades, has already, uh, one, increased their sewer rates, two, has increased their city tax levy. That's my understanding. So I'm not sure if Bangston has done either of those two.
Right.
So I don't know if that's in the formula for consideration, but it's certainly in my, in my thought process. I don't know how you two feel about that.
No. It definitely weighs in, uh, they have to, as I said, they have to come up with some matching funds for this because we cannot carry that load all by ourselves, I don't think. Did you have any comments on it or?
Well, I think my recollection of the Bangston, not only their presentation, but previous conversations with them is that they need to make some decisions about what they're going to do. Are they going to try to extend that drain field? I mean, there's, you know, I'm not a deceptive person, right? But there seem to be, they needed to choose option one or option two. And, and which option they choose will determine the resolution. And I, I don't intend to fully fund this. I do have concern for them, um, but I think that, uh, maybe we need to have, you know, a specific work session. Maybe we go there to one of their city council meetings again, just to say that we don't want to write them off. But they are so small with, I don't know that there's anticipated or planned growth or even likelihood of that. You know, we're hearing from communities that are growing and writing applications and, um, I guess I'd like to have a chance to, to know if, I mean, it seems like they just want this, it's just a nightmare. They just want it over. But I can't lead them for that. They're going to have to do some, they have to determine what it is they want to do.
And I, I don't want to see small towns, uh, unincorporate because that is, that's Dubuque County. That's our heritage, our small towns, you know? It's just, it's reliable, you know?
There's been some conversation about that a couple of years ago. I mean, they've been living this a long time and some conversation about what if they do unincorporate because these DNR flags attached to the, the property owners. I don't even know that they can get out of it by unincorporating. You know, then it's, then we become with the DNR, the heavy to, to get it right. And then we tax them instead of them taxing themselves. It's just, I would rather not go that way. They would like to preserve the uniqueness of their city, obviously.
Okay. So we'll table that until we can get some more information on, from Bangston.
You know, I, I would think that, let's table it for one more time and then I would be prepared to deny, but leave open the option for them to come back, if that makes sense. That it's not a through discussion, our ARPA funding will exist for a period of years. If they can move off center and move a direction, then we become an, uh, perhaps a partner.
So it would be fair. What do you think of that?
I, I think we need to hear from them and review other options.
This table for the time being, I don't know. Did you want to discuss the city of Luxembourg? Heard that today for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'd like to move that forward. If that's our language, we hear from them, we forward them, then they come back in a couple of weeks to us. I don't know.
I mean, I think if we have consensus today, we could grab it. But if, uh, we need more information or more time, normally we, we haven't made, quote, game day decisions when people presented. But I'm, I'm, I, I think it's a good project. I think they've, they've done a lot of work. I think it's going to add some economic vitality and jobs. So I would be comfortable in funding the full amount as I stated today.
I would be in agreement with that. Um, it is an economic development area. I think it, uh, definitely, uh.
And where I am on it is it's a road project and it's, you know, right above, um, the Dubuque community Y. And we moved that forward. I mean, I would deny the Y camp. That's their road rehabilitation. We see a different type of road project that's needed, that's economic development for one of our small cities. So, you know, my concern all along has been that some things are, have to be yes and some things have to be no. So, I mean, I, it's, we are, we are rapidly spending the remaining seven million dollars. And, and I'm trying to be very cautious about that. And that's one reason that I didn't make a motion to, uh, to support the community foundations, immigrant request that came back because as I see that, I think it's one hundred thousand, it's a sixth of what their ask was. I don't know that they can do that project with a sixth of the money, but here's some, is that helpful? When there's other communities for that same or similar sum of money could complete a project.
Understand.
So it's shifting sands. Priorities can change based on what comes before us.
The, uh, yes, being the devil's advocate, I don't want to say it that way, but the Y, uh, thing is for a road and it obviously would bring a lot of, a little more economic activity into their area for the zip lining and all the stuff that they got going on at the Y. I mean, decent road coming in there may, you know, bring more people in to do the zip lining, whatever. It's a desk, it would become more of a destination. Maybe people coming to here to do their zip lining. I'm not, uh, I'm not a zip liner by any means.
I'm a no on the Y.
Discussion. Jay, your thoughts?
Play it to the, which project are you referring to?
Uh, on the Y one Ann had brought up.
We're on the Y now. Um, I toured it, uh, and, uh, you know, it has value. It's a, obviously it's a longstanding nonprofit in, in the community. You know, the represents the outdoor education area. Uh, I think the ask is, is modest. The need is there and every one of these here has a need. I haven't seen one project that you could say, ah, that's really, that's just a,
It's not just.
That's an extra, you know, on the top type of thing. Um, so it's, it's a core need of those. And I think if we can support it, I would like to do that. Not ready to necessarily do that today, uh, because I think it is wise to, to prioritize some of the other applications that we have and we haven't gotten through all of those. I would probably prioritize the municipal or city programs above the nonprofit ones related to infrastructure. That would be my two cents.
Do we have consensus on funding the city of Luxembourg at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I am in favor of that.
My position has not changed.
And is it appropriate, Chair, to make that motion today?
I guess we could make the motion and the resolution would come next week.
Motion. If we are ready for that, if the board want to take action on that today, it's, we, we normally haven't, but I'm, I'm open to that. Sounds like we do. I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the city of Luxembourg's American Rescue Fund for two hundred and fifty thousand and have staff create an individual resolution for a future meeting to that effect.
Second.
I have a motion to second to approve the allocation of ARP funds to the city of Luxembourg in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious.
I'd like to also talk then about the, um, food pantry. I'd like to also talk about Dyersville's food pantry request.
All right.
See if we have consensus there. Um, I strongly believe that that's, that's again, a modest request. It isn't their complete building and it's, um, it, they are regional in their reach. The Dubuque Food Pantry is not, it is used by the city of Dubuque residents. Um, the regional is again, out to our small communities and I don't think a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is too big of an ask. So I would be in support of that request. And if we have consensus on that, we could do just what we did with Luxembourg today.
I'm definitely in support of that as well. And, uh, I'm impressed with the, the board's ability to take action on some of these applications. So I would be very much in favor of that.
Have a motion in a second, I guess.
Well, no, I would just, discussion. I hadn't put it in that form yet, but, uh, if you feel we need to, to review a few more things. We normally, like I said, hadn't made any decisions. I normally don't get additional information, um, a week or two later, uh, past what we've done for, for minor, for smaller projects like this and smaller programs. So I think it's appropriate to, to make a decision when you have the information in front of us.
Where is it, Ed, in the, in the whole four, four page?
It's in the, uh,
The green section.
Rule number seventy. You man. It was in blue, just above the white. All right.
Yes. The only concern I would have with it, and I know we gave the food pantry in Dubuque here roughly a hundred and seventy-five is,
Rural, it's an R.
There's been a lot of money handed out to Dyersville. Field of Dreams, the state's given eleven million for infrastructure. And all that's going to bring a lot of activity to the town of Dyersville. A lot of activity to the town of Dyersville. And early on, we said, you know, some of these projects are, you know, brought to light and then local businesses can maybe step up and help out a little bit. This would be one of those where some of the smaller businesses around Dyersville may be willing to step up and pick up some of this. Because they are going to gain from all the activity at the Field of Dreams.
Did we have a slide from them? A hundred and seventy-five thousand was just a contribution. It isn't the whole project.
Two eighty-five was the whole project, my memory.
This is just part of the cost of the building, but then the building is one of the pieces. Correct.
Even more impressive. The hundred and seventy-five was sixty-one percent.
Back, look at the spreadsheet.
Of the building, I think.
Uh, what I see is two eighty-five still in the budget detail. It's on.
There was one slide that showed the budget overall for the whole project and it was over four hundred thousand dollars.
Cents and incomes, maybe it's on another page. Um, okay. I don't have that one. Where's that? Well, just in their presentation, not in our packet. Okay. All right. My memory was just their presentation. So.
Going to two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
And I, I would imagine probably most of that will be done through philanthropy in Dyersville. But sixty percent of the building, this is a, this is an appropriate ask. We've done this for another food pantry.
I would just, well, maybe, I mean, if we, maybe this is one we, maybe this one, since we haven't, you know, jumped to consensus right away, that we sit on it for a week.
And when we can just move forward, I think, I believe we're in consensus to move it forward, hold it, whatever you want to call it.
No one else is ready to make the motion for a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
I think I'm, I'm, you know, I've, I've been one saying we need to move forward. Um, and, uh, so I wasn't stopping motions on game day decisions, but that with another supervisor wants pause for a week, I think we should give him that.
I'd be willing to move it forward at a hundred and seventy-five. I was just bringing up discussion points as well.
I think it's a fair point.
Do we have consensus at a hundred and seventy-five?
I feel it's, I mean, they're putting in, they have some skin in the game, quite a bit of.
I think a motion to approve a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the rural food pantry.
I will second that. I have a motion to second to approve the hundred and seventy-five thousand from ARP funds to the rural community food pantry. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. Is the steeple square and, uh, the four mounds they're holding yet? Sustainable Iowa Land Trust, uh, that was moved forward at five hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and nineteen. Discussion regarding that.
I, I would, I want to do something there, but I don't know that that's a bigger priority than doing lights for, um, doing the Rickardsville sewer and doing lights, which is completing a thirty-year project. And we have library requests. So, I mean, we, and also sustainable land trust. I thought I heard her say, this is pretty much the lowest number she can use. Otherwise it doesn't have, it's, it has to have enough funding to get lift, right? She's already significantly reduced her request.
Yes.
Yeah. From one point, I think I see in the spreadsheet there from one point six million was the original request to five hundred and seventy thousand. So I think they were paying attention to, to some of our scoring and priorities. I think this, this lines up very well to a couple initiatives that the board has fully supported. And one, that would be our water quality initiatives, uh, two, related to the agricultural component of those water quality and soil health initiatives. And one, that would be our water quality initiatives, uh, two, related to the agricultural component of those water quality and soil health initiatives. And then three, the, the growing local foods movement, uh, that we've, uh, supported through, through various grants and then the creation of an actual local food council. So I, I would be a supporter of this and I believe we can, we can accomplish this support along with the additional ones that Supervisor McDonough mentioned.
Just a, uh, I think it's a pretty heavy ask.
I'd like to.
I'd like to hold that one until we get through a few more of these to see where we can be at with that. I mean, I understand they're, they're asking what they're going after, but again, I think we have some other things that have a little more priority over that right now. It just.
I'm joining you Supervisor Pata. I'd like to have a conversation with the person who submitted the grant to see if there's a lesser number that makes the project still runnable.
That's fine enough. Ed, if you want to reach out to, uh.
Suzanne.
Suzanne, hear him, just see if she would be Kristen, coming back in with, uh.
I think we should move forward on the city of Rickardsville. If also, uh, they have a sewer relocation on page four of, for $500,000. I would fully support that.
They did have options for us to consider in their presentation that I do recall seeing, um, related to various funding levels. I would like to see those options before I fully support the 500,000, but I, but I would like to fund, uh, a component of what they're, I'd like to fund this project because I think they've, uh, come a long way already to get it launched by, you know, increasing their sewer fees and increasing their levy. That, that shows definite commitment.
Can we bring them back and let's see the slides with them or do you just want to see the slides next week or what?
Go ahead and put them up, Kevin.
I've had folks in the room from the city of Cascade. So some discussion about that application too would be good.
That up for me a little bit? There's your, your scenarios that they, I mean, I'm very, very happy they laid them out for us. That was good for us to, they could present those options. So you've got the, you know, the change in their estimation and you can see that the, obviously the larger the reward, the, the less taxpayer burden they have on their own local city.
They've, uh.
With everyone.
They've taxed, um, their locals pretty heavy and tripled their sewer rates and, I mean, they've done everything they can possibly do to try to make things work, you know?
My question would be is if so, if option one, two, three on the funding, so will they be changing their levy based upon our funding? Is that what I'm reading here and or chaining, changing their meter per month costs? That's, that's my assumption why they're showing it.
I believe the bolded areas next to savings would reduce the their levy and would be a savings based off of what their meter charges are currently. So. So at option one, you would chop off $19.46.
Yeah, if they have to go to a 20-year obligation to get the money.
Forty-seven, fifty.
It's going to cost. If we would give 500,000, they're still going to have to borrow 250.
So this is the, this is what we always know happens behind the scenes with any of our grants. It shifts to other revenue sources they have to find.
And Mary Ann Napp has confirmed that in chat, that that is correct.
Alright. So, you know, currently, you know, every city, all 21, have sewer rates and water rates and some have debt on those. And so that's the current state of play. It's whether the board wants to go to full funding or possibly a lower level of funding. We, this would be the first sewer and water project that we've ever funded and I'm glad to be in that opportunity.
Well, this is, uh, it's sewer and water, but it's moving.
It's not water, sewer, yeah, I'm bad.
It's moving sewer lines because the state's redoing the road. I think the total project was in the area of 1.4 million for this and they're asking for 500,000. They've been working to come up with the other 900,000. So I think I, I would be comfortable with the 500,000. You'd be affecting a lot of people and, um.
It, it's also one of the grants that fits directly inside the articulated scope of the rescue plans for these types of infrastructure projects. Aren't these just directly called out to be for water sewer infrastructure? That's exactly what, I mean, you know, we can try to make other things help to nonprofits kind of fit, but this is exactly what that money was sent and it, and I think it's my belief, it was sent to the counties to administer this way as compared to going to the state and then finding that you're too big for something and, you know, the state regulations trip people up, you don't fit the pocket. So I, we are the appropriate entity to ask for this help and, and I would support the full $500,000.
I think you're exactly right that, uh, the Biden administration sent the money directly to local governments. The previous administration sent it to the state under the CARES Act and we had no input on that. So I'm very, very pleased to be in this. You're also right that, that sewer, uh, was called out, uh, infrastructure components along with another 50, if not 500 things in the American Rescue Fund. So there's, there's quite a few things that are eligible. Do we have the number of, uh, hookups and or accounts affected? I would like to have that. I know we talked a little bit about banks and this is bigger, but probably was still less than 100. Seventy-two. So there are 72 households in a community that would be influenced positively by this. Uh, I, I hear my colleagues at full funding at 500,000 and, uh, I'm ready to take action when you are.
A motion to, uh, approve at 500,000, if my colleague, so does there?
That's the motion I'll make. That's my motion.
Repeat the motion. Be damned, I didn't hear you either.
The motion is what you just said you would entertain a motion for $500,000.
I would appreciate if the supervisor would, would verbalize her motion, just so I can be clear. That's all I'm asking.
My motion is to award $500,000 to the city of Rickardsville for their sewer project.
Very clear. Thank you. I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve 500,000 ARP funding to the city of Rickardsville for their sewer relocation project. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. We would have. Cascade Library, would we want to discuss any further on that?
I'd like to talk about the libraries as a category, if you could. We are, we are holding the Farley request based on the need to get a stakeholder meeting and questions answered. And do we have a date for a stakeholder meeting? Do we have a date for some kind of discussion about the Farley Library?
Dead raver. The, I have been working to coordinate with the Dubuque County Library District Director Amanda. And, um, there actually has already been a meeting of all the libraries in the county. A week and a half ago, um, we've had some additional discussions and I think trying to line something up is where Amanda and I, are planning to go in collaboration with those libraries.
Is the auditor going as well? Kevin, you have had a.
I've had a, our office had one meeting with Amanda and we have another one scheduled tomorrow or Thursday. She has been on a fact-finding mission to make sure that when she sits down to the stakeholders meeting, that she has all of the information, how everything is affected. So she's, she's doing her due diligence that when we have that meeting, we should be able to, uh, you know, have the rubber meet the road, um, with some actionable intelligence for, uh, the three supervisors, so.
Melissa, have you been contacted? Do you want to go to the podium? It's one of the librarians.
Melissa Kane, Cascade Public Library.
Hold the mic.
Sorry, I'll, I'll speak up. Melissa Kane, Cascade Public Library.
So have you been in that stakeholder meeting that was just referenced?
Uh, yes, I was there with Ed and Amanda. What Monica was there, our, one of our board members, uh, Nick Rossman from Carnegie, Shirley Fondahar and Angela English from Dyersville.
And is that the one, Kevin, you were not able to attend because you were out of town?
That's correct.
So are there more? Do you understand there's more meetings, Melissa?
Um, yes, I, I do understand that. Um, we, we had to leave a little bit early. We've had a lot, a lot going on lately, so I had to leave before the end. The me, the meeting we had been in went a good two hours, so.
And I believe it's the intent of the library agency to continue to meet, I think monthly is what we had discussed at, at a certain point, instead of biannually, which is where we were.
Question to you would be what, uh, you know, what is your timeframe? What is your, your need related to decisions for this funding for the city of Cascade? I know, uh, you know, as an example, we just funded one sewer project and delayed another sewer project. So we don't necessarily have to rule altogether with the libraries. That's at least my opinion. So the question is how, you know, what is the urgency and or the need that you have related to the board's decision and deliberating on your funding request?
Um, I see Lisa's here. I might let her, uh, jump in if she would. Yeah, I think she's on the top score. Lisa Carter.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I think we, my understanding, first of all, about the meeting that you're referring to, that was your regular agency meeting, correct? That there has not been a meeting since the supervisors asked for additional information.
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to be clear on that. They had a meeting, but it was their regular meeting.
Right, and that was, um, just before we came in to this meeting two weeks ago.
So I think, um, maybe what they were referring to about due diligence was understanding a little bit more about the options with regard to this usage from communities that don't do funding and what is past practice policy versus how state laws and Iowa code impact on that? Is that correct, Kevin or Ed? Is that what you meant by them doing due diligence?
Yes, that's correct. And I think there's, there's probably some confusion about the meetings. This agency meeting that was a week and a half ago was not one of our regularly scheduled meetings. It's, we have two, we had two meetings a year and they were basically to go over agency numbers and finances and then any new business. Uh, this was one that was set up purposely to, uh, speak to, I believe, Scott County.
Yes.
Center representative, um, so that we could get some ideas and get some feedback from how they're operating in their county.
Do you have a date to be before the Jones County Board of Supervisors?
Uh, yes, we will be visiting with them tomorrow.
So I would say to answer a timing thing, I think, uh, we would like to know what the board's commitment is as soon as possible. Uh, but as I had explained, if you're looking at how, you know, releasing the money, we would not want you to release it until we knew that, that we had the additional funding in place and that would likely be in early '24, where we would be asking for the actual funds. But knowing, you know, that this is whatever amount the board decides, obviously helps us kick off a stronger fundraising campaign, which where we're at with that is working with the community foundation from Dubuque to be able to put together our list of donors that we would begin to reach out to. So that will be our next steps on that. And as Melissa said, we're going to the Jones County Board tomorrow. I just sent them a similar presentation to the one that we went over last week. I think also, you know, just understanding by no means, uh, is our request to indicate that we don't want you to support Farley. I think that, you know, we all have to think regionally, even though, you know, we each serve our individual communities. We recognize that the three of you supervisors represent the entire county. So nothing about our presentation suggested that we didn't want you to fund Harley, Farley. But certainly would want to look at, you know, similar to what you just said with sewer. You know, you talked about our, is one community raising rates and trying to pay for certain things themselves? And then you, you know, talked about funding in a second one that by no means do we think that the two amounts should be equal. I don't think that's practical. I'm assuming that if you have the ability to, you may give Farley more than us and that is understandable. I guess it's just more, uh, as we go forward, looking at what are the right numbers? And we, I don't play by rules that would say we should have asked for more than what we wanted so that you could cut it back. You know, ours is significantly less dollar-wise and percentage-wise. Uh, but I do want to make it clear that, you know, I was asked by Farley to support them and send a letter, which I'm not opposed to doing, but I think for me, hopefully all of our leadership in both communities that are asking support both applications, because I think that's the right thing to do. So really what I would want to know is exactly what questions you want answered. I feel like in my time with you, last time it was addressing things like communities that are not paying any, or not collecting tax dollars and using those for libraries and what options we have uh, in that respect. I think that's one answer, which hopefully, you know, some of this background checking we can answer. And then I don't know for sure what else besides that answer that you're looking for from us. So we want to be clear when we meet what it is that you would like answered.
I, I think we don't.
Thank you, Lisa. That, that addresses.
We don't have an answer to the concerns that, you know, Supervisor Wickham, I recall that you had.
The part about being able to serve everybody?
You want me to handle my own?
Yes.
I'm, I'm holding for you to say if you have objections and what those are.
Just thank Lisa and you jumped in, so just let me know if you have a question for me. I just request you wouldn't speak for me in public.
I am, I'm not, Jay.
I'm just wondering if you, there's a question on the table.
Do you have a question for Lisa?
No, I did have a question. She answered it and I said, thank you. And then Supervisor McDonough referenced my name and my position.
You have another question?
Jay, I am so sorry. I did not use any words to state your position. If you have a position you'd like to state.
I'm not angry. I'm just wishing to make sure that the public can hear my voice and my opinions.
Basically with the libraries, there would be no decisions. They're just going to be moved forward until we get these stakeholder meetings moving, I think. Correct? What was your feeling, Zona?
I, I don't have a new position today. I think the libraries are very important projects. I have received no fewer than two dozen emails from Farley citizens suggesting that I don't support libraries or children reading. You know, when you offer a community a million dollars, just say that for a while, a million dollars. There's so much money right now in government that a million dollars is perceived as being inadequate and what insulting? I do not understand. I, I'm a, I'm a strong supporter and yet because I'm not coming to some scratch point, I don't understand that. Um, I think this discussion needs to happen. It should happen between the citizens in these communities who are, who are, who are doing these ventures. My mayor in Asbury reached out to me this week and said, or last week and said, gosh, and just for some perspective, when Asbury built the city hall. When Asbury built the city hall slash. Library. The Board of Supervisors at that time contributed. The very, very much appreciated sum of $50,000. So we have a unique opportunity here, but. I'm not in a change position kind of place. I'm asking, do you both have your information? Or is there a stakeholders meeting scheduled? Or where are we? We've that that these dollar amounts. Limit other funding opportunities because they are so large.
I understand that. It's not apples to apples. It's the same as if you and I go to buy a $50,000 car. You're going to put $40,000 down and you're going to borrow 10,000. Well, I'm going to do the same thing. Well, in the meantime, my septic system goes out, so I got to spend 25,000 on new sept. But guess what? Now I'm going to borrow 40,000 for that same pickup. We're the same. It you can't say apples to apples because everybody's financial situation is different. You want to you keep trying to put Cascade and Farley in the same boat and you can't do that. Because they're not the same financially.
That is your assessment. And your reason for your vote, and I respect that. That isn't the way that I approach it necessarily, nor as you heard Lisa say, I don't think anyone in Cascade. Is expecting to be treated the same as Farley. I I don't know that we've got more to say. Sir, I'd be interested to know what you wish to say.
Pat Carney, resident of Cascade. I wouldn't want your jobs. But anyway. I noticed in the last several discussions there, you were looking at percentages of ask to percentages of project. In my understanding, in the Cascade Library. It's in the ballpark of three and a half million dollars. And Cascade is asking for a million. So we're we're putting in 66%. To the project if 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 that would become true. Also. Cascade has not asked Dubuque County for that much lately, I don't think. And also, for instance, we built a $9 million sewer plant six years ago. Zero. From everybody. Cascade built their own sewer plant. Divided by 2,000 people divided whichever way you want, but we're paying. Hard sewer and water bills. So to but to get back to the principle of our project or Cascade's project is that yes, we're asking for that money. We're going to raise. Either city or contributions. 66% of the cost of the library. I like to put that in perspective with other projects. So we're not, and I certainly understand that a million dollars doesn't sound like much anymore, but it's a lot of. It's a lot of money. But I'm just saying that from a percentage size. Cascade is willing. To participate up to 66% or, you know. That facts, but the problem is we are planning. On raising money by the city and we are going to raise money. By private contributions. So. Any money that the supervisors give us would really be appreciated.
And. And I'm in favor of libraries. I'm just.
And the decision, you know, everybody wants the decision yesterday and I understand how slow things go. But the point being is that. As soon as. Possible. Cascade would would like to know where we stand. Thank you.
I would agree with Pat's remarks there. It helps us know. Where we're starting if we're starting from. The $5,134.99 that we've had donated already, or if we're starting from. Where wherever it would be, you know. I know. So I'm going on 10 years there and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And one of the things that I think is that. Because I've had the opportunity to be there and we've expanded the hours while I've been there. I would say we used to be open about 34 hours a week. We're open 47 and a half now. We have. Programming. Pretty much every week we've got at least one program, if not. Three. I've been having visits from. The schools last two weeks to talk about summer reading. We have a very robust summer reading program. We have something for nine weeks of the summer and I'm very proud of it because when I started, it was a four week program. And we've gone to nine. We give a free book to every kid that signs up for that program regardless of where they live. And if they read so many minutes, they get another free book. And if they read so many minutes more, they get another free book and they also get some small prizes. This year we have. Bigfoot callers and I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't bring it share with you. I guarantee Bigfoot would come right through the door. So. I, like I said, I'm proud of what we've accomplished. I also see that we could have so much more. I feel like one of the things that I've seen libraries do now is have that space where you can get your driver's license picture done. I would love to have that. Dyersville Library before COVID and I'm assuming maybe they'll start it up again. Would have people come in and eat lunch at the library. Lunches are provided through Western Dubuque Schools for the summer for kids to eat. I'd love to have something like that. I mean, not only is it good for the library, it gets kids in there active. Using our resources, but it. You know, it feeds kids. So I I just see so much more that we could be doing that. We don't have space to do at this time. But I do thank you so much for hearing this out.
Thank you.
So are we going to set up a meeting then? Ed and Kevin will let us know that we'll have one with the agency to make sure we understand the funding mechanism. And then perhaps something between Cascade and Farley to talk about. The two projects. Is that what our goal is to come back to the board?
That will be the goal. This is Kevin. Once we. Once we have. All of our information with Amanda and we have all the answers to questions that have been asked up to this point, we'll reach out and let you know.
Then we'll have a meeting.
Lisa, just to respond to your your earlier question about, you know, what are the expectations of information you you were looking for? And this meeting, I'm not necessarily as interested in. Who's not paying in the funding of other communities? That's not my my concern. My concern is the projects that we fund, the communities that we fund. That we have access to all, the ability to check in and out material and obviously. Have at full access to to those facilities by. Those that reside in Dubuque County for sure and possibly throughout the United States. That was my my, one of my core issues and how we resolve that and, you know, is up to you guys, but. Having access on things we fund. So, you know, we we fund projects. We we need, these are federal funds. Make sure that everyone has access to them.
We will incorporate that question into our conversation. That's the question, though, that does open up all the other things that you said you're not interested in because it.
Doesn't have to, but that's that's.
And that's where we're, that's why Amanda's been meeting with us and and getting state code. She's had multiple meetings with the county attorney. Because there are some things we can't just flex on. We have to be able to abide within the code and agreements that are currently in place.
Do not want to break state code, but agreements are meant to be amended.
So so just as a little bit of what I'm learning also is that we have, I don't have the signed copy, but I'm assuming it's the right copy. Is that we have a 2080 agreement. Between everybody and that's kind of where we get this term, the agencies. And then there's a funding formula in there and it talks about. Libraries that do not have. Or communities that don't have recognized public libraries are required to do certain things. And so to your point. Supervisor Wickham, it's it's important that we understand. An amend an amendment possibility to the 2080 agreement, which I agree with you. If there's a way to do that, that's what I said. Let's think outside of the box and just because we've always done it this way isn't a good reason. But we have to recognize, I think what Kevin's saying is if there is state law that. Limits our ability to tweak the 2080, we have to understand. What limits that poses versus just being able to amend the 2080 is my understanding. Which is our.
You'll be able to figure it out and I'm I'm here. You're ready to listen because I I think these are wonderful projects that. Both the libraries have brought to us and I. Anticipate, at least from my vantage point, that I'll be able to provide some positive funding.
Sounds good. Okay, well, we will hopefully hear from. Your staff soon that we can. Who are willing and able once everybody's ready.
Kevin and Ed will be taking care of it in a minute or.
Yes, but we have no timeframe.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Along to the city of Eppert, do you want to have any discussion on that regarding their ask for the. 395,000.
I would. I would like to have the opportunity to just recalculate things myself. Before we move forward.
I think we've made good progress. I'd be happy to. If you're proposing that we halt here, I'm I'm good with that. I mean, good progress. We're a little bit behind.
Yep, I would. I'm good with that.
A motion for a five minute recess.
I will second that motion.
A motion and a second for a five minute recess. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll be back at 12:15.
Supervisors, we are returning to a closed session. I will be exiting Zoom during this recess.
Okay.